Good evening, we're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Will everyone please stand before the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Chair Twysdale?
Present.
Vice Chair Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Goings?
Present.
Commissioner Trobridge?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flankis?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
To the public, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning all our actions and the appeal or review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. I want to turn this over to the city attorney right now, but he's got a small announcement.
Chairman, thank you very much. I just wanted to let our legal extern introduce herself to the commission. She's a student at Boyd School of Law.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Burton. As Mr. Lewis said, I am the extern at the city attorney's office, and I just wanted to thank the commission for the opportunity to be here this evening.
Thank you. We have a motion on the minutes for the September 23, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Chairman?
Chairman, a motion would be to approve the minutes.
Are there any comments or questions? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, before you cast the vote, I'll need to abstain because I wasn't present at the meeting.
Okay. And those are approved with Mr. Flankis' abstention. Any items for the Planning Commission staff or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, item number 10, the applicant requests this item be obeyed to the November 18 Planning Commission meeting to resolve outstanding issues. Item 38, the applicant requests that this item be obeyed to the November 18 Planning Commission meeting. And item 63, the applicant has requested this item also be obeyed to the November 18 Planning Commission meeting.
Are there any other items that anybody wishes to have brought forward? Seeing none, any more motion?
Chairman, the motion would be to move those forward as recommended.
Okay. There's a motion, please cast your vote. And that is approved. Those items will be heard on November 18. We have no consent items, now we go to our one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have the item removed from this portion of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I need to abstain from item 23 because of a potential conflict. My law firm may utilize the company for some advertising in the future.
Okay, any other?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining. Just the record reflect, I abstained on item number 21 due to I having been in litigation as an attorney against the principle on item 21.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I also need to abstain on 21.
On 21?
Yes.
Okay.
For the same reasons stated previously.
Alrighty, and for the record, I'm going to abstain on item 24 inasmuch I have an interest in this project. Okay.
Chairman, if I could comment?
Sure.
In regards to item number 26 and 27, I'm going to vote in support of these and feel I certainly have no conflict, but I think that the record needs to simply record that we're asking for a waiver of the distance between the city park for the sale of alcoholic beverages. That requested waiver is necessary because of a parcel that's defined as a city park where it actually is a golf course that includes as part of the amenities a restaurant that also sells alcoholic beverage. And therefore, I technically requires the waiver, but it's not really a park, park with children playing on swings and the like. It's an adult-oriented facility. So those comments in regards to items number 26 and 27.
Okay, alrighty. Now we're going to open these items up. Related items 6 and 7. Item 6, GPA 39192, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, from PF Public Facilities to C Commercial. Item 7, ZON 39193, from CV Civic to C2 General Commercial. Item 8 and 9 related items. Item 8, GPA 39326, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, from PF Public Facilities to MXU Mixed Use. Item 9, ZON 39327, from CV Civic to C2 General Commercial. Item 11 and 12 related items. Item 11, GPA 39339, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from C Commercial to PF Public Facilities. Item 2, ZON 39341, from CM Commercial Industrial to CV Civic. Related items 13 and 14. Item 13, GPA 39347, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from C Commercial to MXU Mixed Use to PF Public Facilities. Item 14, ZON 39348, from CM Commercial Industrial to CV. Items 15 and 16 are related items. Item 15, GPA 39349, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from MXU Mixed Use to PF Public Facility. Item 16, ZON 39350, from CM Commercial Industrial to CV Civic. Items 17 and 18 are related items. Item 17, GPA 39357, applicant, city of Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from MXU Mixed Use and C Commercial to PF Public Facility. Item 18, ZON 39358, from R2 Medium Low Density Residential to CV Civic. Item 19, RQR 39424, applicant CBS Outdoor, owner Sahara Rancho Office Center, LLC, which allow a 90-foot tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign. Item 20, RQR 39434, applicant Lamar Outdoor Advertising, owner Lippen 1992 Trust, which allowed a 40-foot tall 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign. Item 21, RQR 39435, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor, LLC, owner Ernest A. Becker III, which allowed a 40-foot tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign. Item 22, RQR 39465, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, for a government facility fire station with waivers of all landscaping requirements. Item 23, RQR 39501, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner Pool Sanford, LLC, for a 40-foot tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign. Item 24, SUP 39143, applicant Cornerstone Company, owner Chitac Development, Inc., for a proposed 7,000-square-foot gun club ski target range and archery facility indoor. Item 25, SUP 39412, applicant The Gold Deposit, owner GGP Ivanhoe II, Inc., for a second-hand dealer jewelry and precious metals. Item 26, SUP 39440, applicant owner Great Wash Park, LLC, for a supper club with a waiver to allow 140-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is the minimum required. Item 27, SUP 39441, applicant owner Great Wash Park, LLC, for a liquor establishment tavern within a 28-acre, 28.44-acre mixed-use development with waivers to allow a distance separation of 141 feet from a park and to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a similar use where 1500 feet is required. Item 28, SUP 39454, applicant Payar India Restaurant, owner David L. Jukes Receiver, to add a beer/wine cooler on sale establishment use to an existing 200-square-foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a church or synagogue where 400 feet is required. Item 29, SUP 39460, applicant Veradero Cuban Restaurant, owner Rancho Santa Fe Enterprises, LLC, for a proposed beer/wine cooler on sale establishment use within an existing 1,240 square-foot restaurant. Item 30, SUP 39471, applicant ROI Zalak, owner Urban Land of Nevada, for a proposed second-hand dealer use jewelry within an existing 1,200-square-foot jewelry store. Related items 31 and 32. 31, VAC 39480, applicant owner Rancho Circle Shopping Center, LLC, petition to vacate a 12-foot wide public drainage unit. Item 32, TMP 39484, Rancho Circle Shopping Center, applicant owner Rancho Circle Shopping Center, LLC, for a one-lot commercial subdivision. Item 33, SDR 39469, applicant Team Ford, owner Ryan M.E., LLC, for a proposed 7,000-square-foot car wash and mini-gloot facility. Related items 34 and 35. Item 34, ROC -- hey, we're down to our public hearing now. These items were all advertised as public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on these items can do so, and if you do wish, we will pull that item from the agenda and to be heard in its normal course.
Thank you. Todd Farlock, 240 North 18th Street. For the staff, are they, these ones that have the bellboards, are they keeping these bellboards nice?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak on these items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further comment, my motion would be to follow the recommendation of our staff for approval of all of the items under the one motion, one vote aspect of this agenda, and noting the abstentions of the various commissioners on items 21, 23, and 24.
Okay.
Motion for approval.
And removed from that portion, again, just to clarify, that item 10 is not part of the one motion, one vote.
Yes.
So there's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments or questions, please cast your vote. And those items are approved with noted abstention of item 21, 23, and 24.
And moving forward to the City Council on November 17 are items 6, 7, 8, 9, 11 through 19, 21, 24, and 25. Those items that are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days are items 20, 22, 23, and 26 through 33. Thank you.
Okay. Now we go to our public hearing items. Item 34, ROC 36960, applicant owner Sharon Roth, requests for review of condition to delete condition number 3 and 5 of a previously approved rezoning ZON 3474, which required a comprehensive site development plan review to illustrate the location of joint driveways, joint parking and access agreements, a consistent landscaping plan, and a traffic impact analysis at 708 South Jones Boulevard. Companion items 35 is SDR 36959, applicant owner Sharon Roth, for a proposed conversion of a single-family residence to a 1,770-square-foot office medical with waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer requirements to allow a zero-foot buffer along the west property line where 15 feet is required, and a zero-foot buffer along the north and south perimeters where 5 feet is required.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for the proposed conversion of an existing single-family residence to a medical office. Since the tabling of this item revised plans have been submitted to reduce the size of the proposed medical office to 1,380 square feet, increase the provided parking, and increase the width of perimeter landscape buffers. A variance for parking that was previously submitted for the site is no longer needed as a result of the site changes. Waivers of perimeter landscape requirements will still be required, however, the site will have improved access and circulation, additional trees on the perimeter have been provided, and the site will be compatible with adjacent residential development. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the site development plan review. Staff is also recommending approval of the request for review of condition as the subject conditions were approved for the cooperative development of nine lots along Jones Boulevard and have limited applicability to the development of this individual lot. In addition, the resolution intent to rezone, along with the associated conditions, has expired for seven out of the nine lots included in the previous rezoning action. If the applications are denied, the site will remain as a single-family residence. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for the items' publication.
Can I hear from the applicant? You identify yourselves with the record.
Hi, thank you very much for hearing us. My name is Sharon Roth, and my address is 101 South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite 22. My representative will actually be speaking.
My name is Laurie Moncarish, LM Construction, 8933 Wild Creek Court. We were retained by Dr. Roth to resurrect this project and get it untabled. We therefore removed the existing garages to reduce the square footage, thus allowing the parking variance to be removed. In addition, we've added landscaping on the frontage of Jones as well as on the north, I'm sorry, on the south border, as well as increasing the landscaping in the backyard, which is the east side of the property. In addition, we've also added additional elements to the project to make it into more of a commercial look, yet still keeping with the residential look of the neighborhood. So we're with staff, and we are here asking for approval for this project.
Thank you. This item was issued at this public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlock, 240 North 18th Street. I just want to make sure on the landscaping. This is what we're actually looking at now, right? This is what we're going to be looking at. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other? Please go forward.
I, hi guys.
Your name for the record?
I own both of the properties.
Your name for the record?
Ali Fadelsi, I'm the owner of 704 at the right of the property and 800 at the left of the 708 construction.
Okay.
The only question I have, I didn't understand exactly what the construction is going to do. Are they going to affect and kind of modify my driveways, or my driveways are going to stay the same?
They're not doing anything on regards to your property.
Thank you so much.
If there are no other comments, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Before you start, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to abstain on this matter because I've represented Mr. Moncarish before, as well as LM Construction as their attorney, as well as my firm.
Okay. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, I'd like to start. You've gone to such great leaps and bounds to make this property work for you. And I know that when you bought it, you thought it was going to be a very simple fix, and I just wanted to say I admire your tenacity and how hard you worked to make this property work for that site, and you're going to see my full support tonight. And I congratulate you on all the hard work that you've done. Thank you very much.
And I would simply echo those comments. I have had the opportunity to visit the site on two occasions and also to meet with Dr. Roth, and I think that she's done everything humanly possible to improve the area. I think it's going to be a welcome addition to the neighborhood, and I support also.
Thank you. And if there's no other comments, a motion would be in order.
There's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion for approval of ROC 36960, following all of staff's recommendations.
There is a motion for approval, please cast your vote.
And also, the companion item.
And that is approved with Commissioner Flankis' abstention.
And the companion item of SDR 36959, and I wish you lots of luck, Dr. Roth.
Thank you very much.
There's a motion for approval? And that is approved with Commissioner Flankis' abstention, and this will go on to City Council on November 17. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work. Now we go to items 36 and 37, related items. Item 36, VAR 39122, applicant owner EV APS, LLC, to allow a zero-foot setback where a 10-foot side yard, 15-foot corner side yard, and a 20-foot front yard and rear yard setback are required, and to allow 86% lock coverage, or 50% lock coverage is the maximum allowed at 400 South 7th Street. Companion items SDR 39121, for a proposed five-story 120-foot tall 55,132 square-foot office building with waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer within the requirements to allow a zero-foot buffer where 15 feet is required on the north and east perimeters of the, and 8 feet is required on the south and west perimeters. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the requested site development plan review does not conform to development standards required by Title 19 for the C1 Limited Commercial zoning district, resulting in a site that will be overbuilt. In addition, the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances pursuant to Title 1918070 that would substantiate the requested variance. The staff has recommended denial of both applications. If denied, the property will remain in its current configuration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jay Brown, 520 South 4th Street, representing the applicant. With me is Scott Brown, the architect for the project. We've been working with staff, and we understand their concerns, but if we comply with their setback requirements, the building would be, there wouldn't be enough space to build a building on that location. So we believe it's a beautiful design building, and really the only two areas of concern are the dome and the Pop Squire House. With regard to the dome, let me assure you it's going to be tastefully done. You can't even really see it from right by the building because the parapets blocking it. Unless you're at a good distance away, you don't even see the dome, and it'll really be terrific enhancement for the tenants and their clients. As far as the Pop Squire House, we've made every effort to move that house, and we work with staff. I call the director almost every day to try to do something about it, and we're still willing to even give it away, but we can't make a condition of approval because we'll never build that building. Any event, I'd like to have Mr. Brown spend a few minutes showing you his terrific work on the design and the landscaping that's really a part of this project that we're very, very proud of.
Good evening, Scott Brown, Design Cell Architects, 10777 West Twain. Just wanted to briefly touch on some of the items on our design. Our client desired an old traditional Philadelphian-style architecture for his project downtown, similar to the post office building, and some of the design elements you see on the old Las Vegas High School. Being right across the street from the Las Vegas High School and being in the Las Vegas High School Historic District, we wanted to have a traditional style building design there. We have colonnades, balustrades, brick veneer, stone veneer, and which we would carry all the way up to the dome and have an aged copper roofing at the dome. With that being said, we've also sort of overcompensated for the landscape. We're doing perimeter trees 14-foot on center around the street fronts where 20 is required, I believe. And we've also placed several trees, large trees, up on the podium level as well. So we'd have a double layer of landscaping down at the street front and up on the podium deck. As far as the setbacks are concerned, we've stepped the building back to lessen the impact there. But as Jay mentioned, conforming to the required setbacks would severely reduce the buildable footprint on this lot, and being a corner, a corner lot, would also have the side yard setbacks, reducing the parking and making it economically viable to build on this site. So with that, I'd like to just answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. This was advertised as public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlock, 240 North 18th Street. This place is really getting turned around. We've got that new law building that's got the basketball court on the top of it, and now we're getting this. This is terrific. There's a question I have, though. Usually, it's this five-story. Usually, you figure 10 feet per story, which would make 50 feet, and this is going to be 120-foot tall. So what, where is all the, is this dome going to be like six?
The dome and the flag, it's kind of like the Empire State Building when you had all those things on it, you figure them in the height.
If I may, gentlemen?
Do they have the money for this thing? Is it going to get built? It's great.
If I may, so that we clarify, the height of the building is what, and the height with the dome is what?
I can help on that if you want. I believe in, Scott, correct me, about 85 feet is the building, and with the dome, we go as high as 120 feet. Is that what rights?
That's correct.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Goings?
My only comment, I think prior to this, I think the other alternative, we were going to get a older house, historic house, on top of a new existing building, so I would wholeheartedly be willing to trade that in for this type of architecture down in that area.
Commissioner Trobridge?
If I could, I sit on the board for a financial institution that at one time held the loan on this particular property. That no longer exists. It was sold to someone else, so I'm free to comment on the property. At the time, my institution owned the land, or the note, I guess, whichever extent is correct, we looked into this several times, and the existence of the Pop Squire building created a problem at the time. I don't think that problem reached the level of being a true concern, because that particular home, while it was the home of Pop Squire, who was an original publisher of one of the first newspapers in town, that's the significance of it. The home itself has undergone numerous renovations and architectural and structural changes to the point where now it's almost, at best, it's minimal historical value. It's been several months, if not more than a year, since we held the property, but when we held the property, we tried on numerous occasions to donate that old home in an attempt to save it to any historical preservation group or any individual that would have been of a means to relocate the property. And we spent several thousands of dollars and many, many months in that effort, and could not get one single response. As soon as a group that might have been interested went to look at it, they said, "Well, that's not what it's presented to be," and it's not. And so, having said that, I think that the proposed project will be a very significant and a very beneficial addition to the downtown area, and you're going to see my support of this project.
Okay, any other comments? We spent a lot of time, obviously, on this property, and we're all up here very sensitive to trying to save a piece of history in the downtown area and how that, when possible... possible, we can do that. And I think if the applicant is willing to continue their commitment to donate the property or work with an organization to try and get it out of the way, I think in these times when we're trying to create real projects and a real economy, sometimes that's the best assurance we can get, rather than put something that is a burden that may not be able to get there. This will take time to finish the working drawings and all of the other things. Mr. Brown, in your, one of the drawings you submitted to staff was a material drawing where it showed, without the dome or percolator, whatever it's called, an elevation, which actually, I mean, when I saw that, when I was thumbing through my backup, I thought, you know, it fit more the territorial nature of the architecture of the school that sits directly across the street, and the, I think it's Oxford Building, which is really the, I guess, French colonial that another law firm occupies directly behind it. And that's where I took the lead before I saw the, you know, the rest of the package, and I felt that the, that elevation better represented the issue, the compatibility with the park down there, and also would deal with the height issues. But, you know, I'll see what the rest of the commissioners have to say, and, you know, maybe craft a motion that deals with all these issues. Commissioner Evans?
Mr. Chairman, yes, thank you. I appreciate your efforts to try to preserve this, and I would commend you on this particular application and the elevations, which are far superior to the other two iterations that came forward over the years. I remain concerned about the building, and, you know, inside, it's pristine, and my sense is that at some point, something will get built here, and I do like the design, which takes a lot of liberties in mimicking the design elements of the Las Vegas High School, now the Las Vegas Academy, and I like the tree canopy that you've created up on the second level. My question, though, is perhaps, would there be any inclination to at least agree that you would have a couple of month period, say a three-month period, February or something, where if we can attempt to find someone who will take this building, hopefully in the close proximity downtown, I've always said it would make a great fit somewhere within the Las Vegas Academy, which is almost across the street, you know, a home ec department, a student union, a small museum of sorts. Can you comment on the ability to perhaps buy a little bit of time so that hopefully the preservation community and the city might be able to find an alternative? Because I do think that there is a historic element here, and that the interior of that building, I know it's been vacant for a couple of years, it is absolutely pristine and untouched by time.
I thought that issue might come up tonight, and I did speak to the applicant, and certainly, why don't we say February 1st? We'd certainly agree, at least until that date, if something comes up afterwards, it would be at our option, but certainly we'll make a public statement that if anyone wants to come at their expense and take that building between now and February 1st, it's theirs.
Did I answer for you?
I don't know if you want to have approval of the city, but it goes to someone that you're happy with or whatever, but assuming that someone from the city is fine with it, we're fine with it through February 1st. We're not going to demolish it until at least that date.
Any other comments, motion?
And also, if I could, Mr. Chairman, respond to your comment, and my understanding about the dome, and I may embellish, we just feel, in speaking to prospective tenants, that it's that kind of atrium look and view from interior that makes the dome so important to us. It isn't so that he's got, you know, private design, it's what the, you know, the people putting up the money field and speaking to tenants, and they're going to have their, you know, firm there, that they just think that that's going to be a real wow, and that's why hopefully, you know, you'll permit us to have that as part of the approval. Thank you.
And then I'll make a motion in regards to item number 36, variance 39122, make a motion for approval subject to all staff conditions.
There is a motion for approval on item 36. Please cast your vote.
Before you post the vote, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to explain my vote. I do understand that this will move forward, but I will be voting no, simply because I believe that that one particular house does have substantial historic significance. I had always hoped that it could be incorporated into some additional design, kind of an encrusted jewel into something. That's my wish. But I do thank you very much for attempting to work with everyone, and I hope that you do continue that in good faith. I know, Mr. Brown, that you will, and I hope your client can find a home for that.
Okay. Thank you. And that is approved, and now we go to item 37, SDR 39121.
In regards to item number 37, SDR 39121, I'd make a motion for approval subject to all staff conditions, with the acknowledgement and the appreciation of the applicant to withhold any development on the parcel until after the February 1st, and will see the historical significance of the building as determined by the interest in those that are willing to step forward and relocate the building, absent any.
But, Chairman, just sort of, so I understand, you're not, to the make of the motion, that's not a condition that your place?
No, not at all. It's just acknowledging their willingness to do it.
Correct. Okay. There is a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to council on November 17th. Thank you very much. Thanks. Item 39, GPA 39489, applicant Sequoia Electric, owner Sage Brush Property Ventures LLC, requests for a general plan amendment from SC Service Commercial to LIR Light Industrial Research at 4485 North Rancho Boulevard. Companion item 40, ZON 39490, from C1 Limited Commercial to CM Commercial Industrial. Item 41, VAR 39492, to allow a zero-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required, and a zero-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required. And item 42, SDR 39491, for the addition of a proposed 9,000-square-foot heavy machinery and equipment rental, sales, and service building to a site that contains an existing 4,011-square-foot office with a waiver of perimeter landscaping standard to allow a seven-foot buffer along a portion of the south property line where eight feet is required. I am going to abstain on the item, as much as I, my partner owns property within the notice area.
Mr. Vice Chairman, currently the site contains a contractor's office. The applicant proposes to construct a 9,000-square-foot heavy machinery and equipment rental establishment. The use and zoning districts that have been requested are not compatible with the surrounding land uses and districts. These changes would further erode the C1 zoning along Rainbow, are not, and are not compatible buffers to the single-family residential to the east of the site. Staff therefore recommends denial of the general plan amendment and rezoning. Staff also finds that the variance request is a self-imposed hardship, and therefore recommends denial. As the proposed change to this site require variance and the proposed use requires a change in the land use and zoning designation, if staff cannot support, staff also recommends denial of the site plan review. If these requests are denied, the site would remain as it is. A future site development plan would be required for further development. Please note, we've received additional protests and letters of support after publication.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, 3005 West Horizon Ridge Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. With me is the owner's representative.
Tabitha Chavez, 4485 North Rainbow Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, first of all, I do want to thank staff and all their efforts. These applications are never easy to assemble. They put a lot of hard work and effort into it, and again, I do want to extend our gratitude to staff as well as our neighbors. We've had two neighborhood meetings, and I want to thank the neighbors for coming out, spending time with us at the meeting and after the meeting, coordinating our efforts, and we believe we do have a viable project. With that, I would like to go to the overhead and quickly orient you to the site. Engineer to start the screen. As you can see, our site is located on the west side of Rainbow. We're approximately two lots north of Craig, to our south. Again, we're bounded by Rainbow, to our east, I-95, to our west, Long Mountain essentially to the north. Here is the Santa Fe Casino, got a fire station up here in this corner of Long Mountain and Rainbow. Down at, below us, we have a convenience store, Terrible Herbs. Just north of that, we have an animal hospital, and we are just neighbors to the north of the animal hospital. North of us is a vacant lot here, and just north of that would be a place of worship. With that, we had, as I stated, a neighborhood meeting. We had approximately six neighbors attend the meeting. A number of items were discussed, typical concerns, the nature of the use, hours of operation, et cetera, and at this point, I would like to hand out to the commission attachments, and essentially, results, I think there's seven of them, results of the meeting. These are what we had also submitted to staff, and staff has incorporated a few of the conditions in the approved conditions, but I want to submit these for the record. These are, again, conditions that we have reached, agreed to with the neighbors. I can certainly read them into the record, but I believe maybe your backup also has those. The main concern that we got out of the neighborhood meeting, after we explained our use, was the potential uses, if this land was to be changed, what could the potential uses be for a CM district? There's a number of intense uses that the neighbors, quite frankly, do not want, we do not want. So we've listed those exceptions in the item number nine in the exhibit. Of all the uses that we have agreed to not have and not allow, I know there's some restrictions of imposing those, but we would certainly self-impose those uses and agree not to have those, and if there's a mechanism we could do to make sure that's somewhat enforceable, so if we do go forward with the project, the neighbors are clearly protected. And that's, that's one of the, really the most important thing we got out of the meeting, and was really the concern. With respect to our proposed use, I would characterize this as really a boutique equipment rental, and by that, you'll see in the application there, we've developed an equipment plan of the pieces of equipment that we intended to have for rent, and I also want to submit the full-size plan to staff for the record. If I could submit that to the clerk. It's in, it's in your backup, it's the 11 by 17 in your backup, and essentially, what that depicts is the type and quantity of the various pieces of equipment. And that, again, we're making that part of the record, and we would agree to limit our pieces of equipment to the exhibit. The neighbors, we worked out all these pieces of equipment with the neighbors, and we've agreed to only contain these. Along with that, we've agreed on the hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 PM, no diesel engine startups before 7:00. The unique item or element about this operation is that he, every piece of equipment actually comes with an operator. I just can't go there and rent a backhoe or a truck. It actually comes with a operator, and so, for example, I might want to dig a hole in my backyard for a trampoline, and, or grandma does, and obviously physically can't do it, so they would go rent a backhoe, and again, it would come with an operator to achieve that goal. So that's what I mean, it's somewhat of a very boutique use, limited use, very low-profile use, and the other, again, items of.
Excuse me, if I can interrupt you for a minute. The city attorney, can we restrict allowed uses? The applicant is saying that by agreement with homeowners or other affected people, they would be willing to restrict uses. What we have before us is a general plan amendment and some zone changes. I, before you go further, I'm kind of curious whether or not this, what the city attorney's opinion is in that regard, and whether or not the staff has had an opportunity to assess this, because I note that the letter is dated October the 6th.
Yes, that was sent to staff.
Mr. Vice Chair, thanks for the question. You know, about every six months, this comes up, and the question is, can we use a site development plan condition to change basically our Title 19 zoning code? The answer is no. Conditions to restrict uses in a zoning district by condition on site development plan are not enforceable. And so, if this commission were to approve those conditions restricting these uses, you would have neighbors that would have an expectation that I, as the city's lawyer, could go to court to enforce these restrictions. In fact, I could not. And so, there would be an unjustified expectation on behalf of your constituents that these restrictions would be enforceable and in place, and in fact, I can't do it. And so, my recommendation to you would be, with regard to the list of conditions here, number four, not enforceable, number nine, 1 through 15, not enforceable. Does any of the commission members have any questions?
That answers my question, but go ahead. I'm assuming we're relying on your good faith here.
Well, we hope to put other measures in place. We do understand, in respect to the city's position, perhaps there could be CCNRs created to limit that, that would trigger any of these uses, or land use, there could be D restrictions perhaps, which I know no one particularly likes, but we wanted to, yes, you do have our word as a good neighbor, but we wanted to ensure to the neighbors that we have no intention of any of these uses being allowed.
Let me ask you this, just in a short answer. What is it that you're attempting to do?
We are attempting to provide a small equipment rental use. And again, Title 19 doesn't really have a category for our particular use. The closest use is heavy equipment. That's what you might see with the A-horn along 95 and so, that's clearly not our use. We've developed the equipment plan that has a couple of backhoes, a couple of trucks, a bucket truck, things like that, very small, again, very small, low-intense use, if you will, of the equipment. Again, as staff opened up, this is a part of a Sequoia Electric's yard in operation. They do have these pieces of equipment, and today's economy and climate, they're looking at, again, a little diversity, and we feel, and we've had a few neighbors in the area that have approached us for borrowing or using these pieces of equipment. Of course, we can't do that, so the thought was to create a small, little rental yard that would be compatible and really benefit the neighbors. We've, again, reached out to the neighbors. We've got two neighbors directly across the street who are most impacted. One of the neighbors in your package submitted a letter of, sent you a letter of approval. He could not be here tonight. We do have the other neighbor who's, again, directly across the street, who's most impacted by this proposal. I believe he's here tonight. He may want to speak about the application, and he, I believe, has reached out to his neighbors as well, and there appears to be no opposition with our proposed use in its boutique, small scale. And that's what we're after, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything further you want to say at this time?
Well, really, at this point, that's really the use, the concern, again, from the neighbors was what if, if this was to go forward, what are the possibilities? We wanted to assure the neighbors, this is clearly our only intent. We. We, again, intend to construct a building to house the equipment. That's part of your exhibit. Other than that, we could substantially, I guess I would say, comply with Title 19. We are asking for a varied setback to our west and a small portion to our north. I did want to point out that we believe through the general plan that we are seeking a light industrial general plan designation as our property is to the north. I believe this board has approved a number of applications to the north back in '08. That's in your backup as well. We felt that portion is compatible. Again, the question in our mind from the neighbors was the CM zoning, what are the other possible uses? And again, the neighbors do have our word. Mr. Barcy, the owner, is a native, not a developer, just a small businessman, and felt there was a little small niche to serve the immediate neighborhood for this type of use. Essentially, with that, I'll stop and see if there's any other neighbors.
Thank you very much. This was a public hearing. Anyone wish to be heard on this? Please step forward.
My name's Joe Thompson. I live on Wheelbarrow Peak, which is the street that faces this. Basically, what we have here is a residential neighborhood that's been invaded by commercial development. This initially happened two years ago when a deal was made with Larry Brown and our Scott Asjam, the guy that's running for senate. They went into the residential neighborhood and turned a whole bunch of properties into commercial in an attempt to create a little commercial district. Most of those properties are failing. Many of them closed at this point. And it's expected that there'll be further closure of the buildings that attempted that. We're in great disagreement with the industrial zoning. This is a residential neighborhood. Most of these buildings here were residential houses that they're trying to transform into an industrials and not industrial park. This is not Losi Road. There are three bus stops right in front of this building here. There's a high school bus stop, an elementary school bus stop, and a bus stop for cat buses with elementary school kids right on Rainbow Boulevard there, right in front of their business. The ones, the businesses that preceded this, an asphalt company and some by Scott Asjam. And the current use, there's an issue with them invading our property along the streets parked in construction trucks. We certainly don't want the traffic that goes along with this. Of the initial zoning there that went commercial, there's one small strip, they tried to push it like the whole area is industrial and it's not. There's one small strip that embraces the edge of the freeway. And if you're to drive by that portion now, that freeway and Craig Road, it looks like a junkyard there. There's just piles of semi-trucks, big tractor trailers, graffiti over everything. It's a junkyard. It's been turned into a junkyard. And we certainly don't want further properties invaded and expressed in this manner. There's a church just two steps over from them. This is a residential neighborhood. It's not an industrial junkyard, and we don't want that kind of business in our residential neighborhood. This is another case of somebody who doesn't want to put down the money to move it into industrial area of town or industrial park. They want to buy some residential land cheap, turn it commercial, and invade the neighborhood. And this is the improper place to do this. This is absolutely not an industrial area.
Thank you.
Without a doubt. And these discussions of small equipment, backhoes and giant tractor trailers, et cetera, not small equipment. As you go along Craig Road right now, they have a ton of their trucks and their semis parked along the freeway off where the Rancho interchange.
So you're opposed to this? Can you tell me real briefly where you live in relationship to this?
I live in, there's a street called Wheelbarrow Peak. The street that faces straight towards Rainbow. I don't have a monitor.
Right in front of there. Is that fair to say, sir?
If we're going to look straight down our street, everybody who's on Wheelbarrow basically intercepts where this property faces on Rainbow. So Rainbow and this avenue is not a commercial district in the same way it might be other parts of town. There are blocks and blocks and blocks of residential housing. So the recent additions to this area are large apartment complex and other residential uses. So it's definitely not the place for an industrial park. It's not safe for the residents. It just does not fit this area in any manner.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I would like to say that there...
Just let me finish with, anybody else from the public want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now you may.
Right behind us, there is a mini-storage, so it isn't residential right in the area that we are in. And we are currently doing a job, the N.D. 3409, which is located on the 95 in between Washington and North Durango. And we are a part of that project. So there is areas where there are going to be heavy equipment, but that is on the freeway. It's not on Craig. On Craig, they are also doing construction on Rainbow and Craig. And where we were parking before in that residential neighborhood, what you're stating, there's no parking there anymore. And that was while the building was under construction that we currently own. So there's no more parking in your residential neighborhood.
Picture last week of people parking there. I wish I would have brought the pictures.
All right. Thank you very much.
A miniStorage is not industrial.
Thank you very much. Mr. Giegus, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I would like to address the neighbors' concern. Mr. Chairman, we disagree with the assessment on that. Again, if we look at the current master, general plan designation, we've got a service commercial, again, to the south of this quadrant, if you will. We've got industrial directly north of us extending from Rainbow to 95. North of that, again, the general plan is designated that for office. There is a couple of small areas of multifamily, but predominantly, this area is transitioning over to commercial industrial uses. We've got also a number of 24-hour uses. Again, as I, I think if we go back to the area, we've got Santa Fe Station to the north. Of course, we've got 95, which is, of course, running 24 hours. We've got a fire station on the corner here. We've got a 24-hour convenience store in the corner here. Again, this area is transitioning, whether the economy is there today or not, but it's clearly going in that direction. Unfortunately, you know, 30 years ago, when I was here in this area, it was very rural. I think, unfortunately, it's a victim of growth. But we wanted to be, again, respectful to not only neighbors that live to the north of us here, but directly across the street in who we feel are, again, are most impacted. We do have, again, a neighbor in the audience who lives directly across the street. The letter of support and your attachment is his neighbor. And as I understand it, they've reached out to a number of their neighbors who would be, again, most impacted by our proposed use. And none of them, as you can see, are expressing any concern with that. We believe this, again, is appropriate. The board has approved, as recently as '08, a similar use or industrial use. And we believe, again, it's compatible only because of the nature of our proposed use and the conditions that we agreed to with the neighbors.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Yeah, William, what I didn't...
No, no, no. Why don't you wait and allow the processes to allow the commissioners to debate? No, the public hearing is closed. Let the commissioners debate it, and then perhaps if you need to speak later, we can open it up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Flengus?
I've struggled with this one. I actually went down and visited the property today. I've looked at the maps and also, for purposes of disclosure, I met with Mr. Giegus yesterday. And I appreciate you coming by and educating me on the project. And as I just mentioned, I have really struggled on this. And the reason I'm struggling is because, one, I like the project itself. I mean, I like the concept you're doing. I like the fact that you're going to put that heavy equipment underneath a building and it's not going to be out there exposed in the yard. I like the look of the house up front, and I like the way everything's kind of hidden in the back. But the problem I'm running into is the type of zoning that you want to do for this, the industrial. And, you know, looking at that neighborhood, it's strictly residential to the east, as we pointed out here. And the idea, I think, at the time was the residential property to your east, all the backyards face it. I mean, there's a high wall and there's no yards fronting on Rainbow itself. So the idea, from my understanding, was at one point in time that this was to make this a somewhat a commercial stretch, because you've got the fire station in the north, you've got the church to the north of you, little gas station to the south, and I think a pet vet or something just directly to your south. But the problem is, is the designation you're looking for, that becomes problematical. I know with your project, you want to do what you want to do, but the problem becomes if you no longer have your project or your project isn't viable and you don't build your project, now we're stuck with that zoning designation. And I appreciate the list and the efforts that you're trying to do to try to alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns on this matter as far as what you won't do. The problem is, we have no authority, as the city attorney pointed out, to put those type of conditions, restricting those types of uses on your property. And as far as the deed restriction, the deed restriction's only as good as your word, which I don't doubt. Problem is, is the person that comes after you. And, you know, the deed restrictions would probably have no bearing or effect when you put them on yourself. They're really worth the paper that they're on. And trying to get a CCNR, you're not part of any homeowners association or any group, so you can't really put these things away. So I have to look to what happens about a year or two, three years down the road. And you close the business, sell the property. And there's a lot of uses on there that are permitted uses, really don't require anybody to come back and get a special use permit. And for that matter, they don't even need to get any type of ruling with us with conditions on it. And, you know, one of those is an adult-oriented business. There's, you know, we've talked about that. You could put a limousine yard, a taxicab yard there. All is permitted uses. And so, there's my struggle. And I thought hard about this. I really want to help you and get that project going, but I've got to tell you I'm not going to be able to support it. And I want to really emphasize to you, I gave it my thorough consideration on this. And again, I really appreciate meeting with you yesterday and you educating me on it. But right now, I'm going to have to vote no on this item.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Just a couple questions. I echo the same as Commissioner Flengus, but I have some other concerns as well. It's that what really scares me is you keep saying, you know, this is boutique, this is small, this is less intense use, and then you turn around and say, well, we're going to have heavy equipment, we're going to have a backhoe, we're going to have a big scoop shovel. I just don't think Rainbow between Lone Mountain Road and Craig can handle it, especially with what we've done over the years to that area, what we've put on there. We've got some apartments coming down on the corner of Lone Mountain and Rainbow, I believe, that are under construction now. I think you're going to have a lot of traffic coming down there. And then you throw in a school, a couple of school buses, and then a cat bus and a couple of heavy equipment, and you're going to have some problems down there. And although the area may be changing, I still think we have to do what we can to support the residents over there, because those folks have been over there for a long time. And even though the area is transitioning, I don't think they're going to move.
I will entertain a motion. Mr. Giegus, you do good work, but I can't support this either, given the, and it's not that I don't disbelieve you, it's that, as the city attorney pointed out, the general plan amendment and the zone change live in perpetuity. And, you know, the guy that comes after you may not have your honor, and there wouldn't be bound by anything that we have any control or jurisdiction over, so...
I appreciate all the commission's responses. That is certainly our concern. We, I think, we have been a good neighbor, and I think that's why we seek some of the support. We understand that. That was always a concern of us, and we certainly wanted to see if we could structure some of that. Unfortunately, we can't.
Retain a motion.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Chairman, I'll move that item 39, GPA 39489, follow staff's recommendation and move to deny.
And that denial of the GPA passes?
And Mr. Chairman, on item number 40, ZON 39490, again, move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Cast your vote. And that denial is approved?
Mr. Chairman, on item number 41, BAR 39492, again, move to follow staff's recommendation and move for denial.
Motion, cast your vote. And that motion for denial also carries?
Mr. Chairman, item number 42, SDR 39491, again, move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
That motion for denial passes?
All matters with Chairman Truesdale abstaining, and all matters go forward to the city council on November 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to item 43, ZON 39455, applicant owner, Grand Canyon Village Square LLC, from R1 residential, or RE residential states to PD plan development on a portion of 55, or 25.48 acres at the northwest corner of Horse Drive and Osso Blanca Road. Companion item 44, SDR 39453, for a proposed 250,267 square foot shopping site.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is located within the Grand Canyon Village master plan area. Rezoning of this split zone parcel to a single PD plan development zoning district is necessary to allow development of the site in conformance to the requirements of the plan. Within the Grand Canyon Village master plan, the site has a special land use designation of CC, community commercial, which allows for low to medium intensity retail office or other commercial uses and serves as an employment center. Specific permitted uses are listed in the master plan. As condition, the requested site development plan review for shopping center conforms to the requirements of the plan, and staff is recommending approval of both requests. If denied, the site will remain undeveloped. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for the items as publicated.
Thank you. We've rolled the clock back. I see two people we haven't seen in almost years. Good evening, Mr. Gordon, and good evening, Mr. Fiorentino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. With respect to Mr. Gordon, you've rolled it way back. But it's my pleasure to be here tonight to represent the applicant on this matter. For the record, my name is Mark Fiorentino with the law firm of Kemper-Kroll. You all know Mr. Gordon. It's also my pleasure to stand with him here tonight. He is the applicant. I have a very brief presentation. If you want to go to the overhead, I think the picture shows most of what we want to talk about. As your staff pointed out to you, this is a site that's in front of you tonight. This is part of the Grand Canyon Village master plan that was actually adopted quite some time ago. The site was planned at the same, at that time, as commercial, so it's been planned for commercial for a long time. The cross-tatch area is actually zoned commercial in conformance with that plan. And for some reason, the blank white area was not. So we're here to zone the white area in conformance with the plan. As your staff pointed out to you, we meet all of the requirements of the Grand Canyon Village master plan. They recommend approval on both applications, on both the zone change and the site plan. And we're really here to answer any questions that you have. We did have a neighborhood meeting, even though one was not required earlier this week. Majority of the folks who were at the neighborhood meeting were supportive of the project. Some were there who expressed some concerns, and I think that this staff report to you has probably highlighted the few concerns that we heard that night.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody here who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Harlow, 240 North High King Street. I've got no problem with this at all, but the monitors are all screwed up. This monitor here is all screwed up. And out here, when you, when they show the location things, it's not coming up on our monitors out there.
Okay. Thank you. I'll let our staff know in the back.
My guess is they heard that.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Commissioner Trogrich?
Oh, oh. Commissioner Todd.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fiorentino, good evening. I do have a few questions. Can you confirm whether or not this is a home improvement store that's meant to be developed on this property?
I may not get it exactly right, so Mr. Gordon may want to step in. We actually labeled the largest commercial portion of the project as a home improvement store. We do not have any tenants secured at this point.
Okay. One of my questions follows that, then, and that is, there appears to be an area next to what is labeled as a home improvement store. I want to confirm that it's not meant for some type of outside storage.
It's not outside storage in the terms of how your code would define outside storage, it's outside storage in the terms of what you would normally see at a Home Depot or a Lowe's. It's landscaping and gardening materials and so forth.
Okay.
Probably, this question actually came up in the neighborhood meeting, and so it's a good one. This is the area that you're talking about on the site plan, again, I'm not sure.
Exactly.
The good news about that area is it's screened from view by the overpass, so it's actually below grade. So the vast majority of it is below the grade of the overpass, so it's mostly screened anyway.
Thank you. And finally, I don't believe there was a landscape plan that was submitted with the application. Can you just briefly describe the landscape buffer that will be between the interchange and the residential homes?
Yes. It's a fairly substantial landscape buffer, what you're talking about is here along Horse Drive. To actually, if I orient it correctly, I'm not sure if the camera can see it. This is north, the, there are residents, some existing residents, south of Horse Drive. The first buffer actually is, for the most part of the project, is the overpass itself, again, because a lot of this project, these buildings in particular, are below grade, and so a lot of them are just screened by the natural landscape of the overpass. However, we designed a fairly intense landscape buffer along the north side of Horse Drive, and actually, if you read your staff report carefully, they point out that it exceeds the standards that are set forth in the code, because we moved some of the required trees from the interior of the parking lot out along the perimeter, including along Horse Drive. So it's designed to have both setbacks, some shrubs, and a substantial amount of trees to create a visual buffer.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Motion?
Thank you very much. I like the plan, I appreciate all the questions you've answered tonight, and therefore, I am recommending approval of ZON 39455, subject to staff's conditions.
There's a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions. If there are any other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on 11/17, item 44.
And along with that, recommending an approval of SDR 39453, also subject to staff's conditions.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and for the maker of the motion, in the analysis of the landscape plan, it shows that there is some reduction in the trees required, so I would simply request that we add a condition, add a line to condition number eight, indicating that the number of trees on site shall meet the requirements of code, and then that can be relocated wherever on the site.
That's correct. That's what I thought the staff report said, so that we should clarify that.
Not in the conditions, I'm just getting it into the condition.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, there's a motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and again, that will go on to City Council on 11/17.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we go to related items 45, 46, 47. Item 45 BAR 39099, applicant owner, Clark County Legal Services Program, to allow zero parking spaces where 118 spaces, or parking spaces are required, at 721 East Charleston Boulevard. Item 46 BAR 39100, to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required, a 5-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, and a 10-foot corner yard setback where 15 feet is required. Item 47 SDR 39098, for a proposed 32,500 square foot, two-story office building with waivers to the perimeter landscaping buffer with requirements to allow buffer of 0 feet along the east perimeter where 15 feet is required, 0 feet along the west and north perimeters where 8 feet is required, and 10 feet along the south perimeter where 15 feet is required. And just as a matter of discussion, I'm going to go ahead and open up the next two items, because they are relevant, even though they're two separate applications. Item 48 BAR 39458, applicant owner, Clark County Legal Services Program, to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required, a 0-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, 6-foot corner side yard setback where 15 is required, a 5-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required, and to allow 82% lot coverage where 50% is the maximum allowed. Item 49 SDR 39457, for a three-story, 33-foot tall parking garage with waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer requirements, to allow 0 foot along the south and west perimeters where 8 feet is required, 0 feet along the north and east perimeters where 15 feet is required. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to items 45 through 47, this phase of the project doesn't include any parking, and requires the parking variance. Staff notes that in addition to the variance for the parking, there's a variance for setbacks for the east, west, and south sides of the buildings, waivers are also being requested to reduce or eliminate the required landscape buffers. This shows evidence that this project is currently overbuilt for the parcel. Phase two of the project is being submitted in conjunction with this project that includes a 92-space parking garage. There is no timetable provided, and no guarantee that it will be built. If the project is approved as presented, there is a possibility that no parking will be provided. The proposed office building is not consistent with Title 19, which is evidenced by the number of associated variance and waivers, and staff is recommending denial. If denied, the development of the subject site would need to conform to previously approved plans. In regards to items, item 48 and 49, this project entails the destruction of the existing office building and the construction of a 31-foot, 6-inch tall, three-story, 92-space parking garage. This is the second phase of the project. It will require remapping of the two parcels into one parcel. The project also requires a variance for setbacks and lot coverage, as well as waivers of the landscape buffer requirements in order to be approved. The project does not conform to Title 19 requirements, as evidenced by the variance in the waiver requests. Since the project could be designed to meet all Title 19 requirements, staff is recommending denial. If the application is denied, the parking garage could not be built. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we start, I'd like to say that I've been blessed to be a court-appointed advocate for State Senator Barbara Buckley's program for foster children in the education side, and my husband has done some work for you, so as much as I would love to vote yes, 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 I have to abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Russell Rowe, 10-100 West Charleston Avenue or Boulevard. A pleasure to be before you again tonight. I'm here on behalf of Legal Aid Center of Southern Nevada, a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing free or low-cost legal services to our citizens in the community. They've been doing that here since 1958, one of the longest-serving nonprofits in my recollection in this community. Of course, I haven't been here, weren't even born since 1958. But being around here since 1977, I know it is one of the longest-serving nonprofits in this community, one that's been here serving our community very well, and will be here for a long time in the future. You may recognize this project, actually. It came before you two years ago as one project, not a two-phased project. You can see on the overhead, it's located here on the northwest corner of Charleston 8th Street. The project that you unanimously approved two years ago is very similar to this project, but for the fact that we separated them into two separate phases, all being under one project. The previous project had a number of variances and waivers associated, just like this one. I've actually passed out a chart for you, just so you could, you can make a comparison, because I think this gets to the core of some of the issues of this application. Do you have this chart? Good, thank you very much. Thank you, staff. What I've done is laid out the various requests we've made with respect to the variances and waivers, as well as some of the key aspects of this project, such as the square footage of the building, the height, et cetera. As you can see in every aspect with respect to this application before you, the standards on this project either meet the standards that you unanimously approved two years ago, or are better than those standards. The size of the building has been reduced by almost 4,000 square feet, the height of the building has been reduced from 65 feet to 50, the parking garage is only 32 feet high, that's about five or six feet shorter than the existing building that they're in right now at Gas and 8th. The parking variance to you, granted, was a 35% reduction two years ago, we've reduced that to a 22% parking variance. Now, of course, we're here tonight asking for a zero, because of the fact that we will be building the parking garage in phase two immediately upon completion of phase one, and the staff from the existing Legal Aid Center move into the new building. But once that parking garage is constructed, there'll be 92 spaces where 118 are required, that's a 22% reduction, actually an improvement over what you already approved two years ago. The setbacks, I'm not going to go through in detail, but you can see in comparison, compared to what we approved, what we brought to you and you approved two years ago, again, an improvement in every respect, or equal to what has been approved, same with perimeter landscaping and lot coverage has actually been reduced. So obviously, the project we're bringing before you is an improvement of what we brought before you last time. I wanted to address, obviously, the core issue, though, with this, on this application, I know is a concern to staff, we've discussed it with them at length in the processing of this application. We actually submitted this application as one site development plan review, and staff asked us to separate them into two separate applications, which we did, because they asked us to do that for them. So the ultimate issue that has been presented to us, and that we understand, is a concern, is what if we don't build the parking garage? What if we build the building and don't build the parking garage? Our answer to that is, that is not going to happen. This is one project. We have one contractor building the building, building the parking garage. We have, will have the project entirely financed as one project. We've raised most of the money required for this project, it's about a $12.5 million project, we've raised about $9.5 million of it. We will finance the rest if we need to, we think we'll have the rest of it raised, but we'll finance the rest if we need to. We are confident in that, and I will submit a condition to you that will ask that you approve as part of this application, that will condition the issuance of our building permits for the office building on full financing of the entire project. Staff, may I hand this to you as well? Just to read it in the record, what we suggest that you approve as a condition on the site development plan review for the office, is, prior to issuance of building permits, applicant shall provide proof sufficient to the city attorney's office that financing is in place sufficient to construct the parking garage. We believe that should give you comfort, knowing that this project will be fully financed, not one shovel of dirt is going to be turned over on that office building, unless we have the project fully financed. And we'll go through with the full project, because we understand the concern that staff has. Frankly, Legal Aid Center does not want to build a building and not have parking for it. That's a problem for its staff, it plans to expand, its staff that it can't do right now because of the building it's in, the economy that we're in, and the recession that we're in, they are quite busy, and they need to expand. They're ready to go as soon as they can and complete the financing. And just as important, they need to have parking available for those clients of theirs that do come by vehicle. Most of them, as you know, don't come by vehicle, there's a significant amount that come by public transportation, or are dropped off by friends. There's a reason Legal Aid is at this location, with Charleston being the second busiest bus route in the CAT system outside of Las Vegas Boulevard. Obviously, the downtown area is a walkable area, where many of the clients can come and access the services of Legal Aid without the need for a vehicle. So we are confident that this will be built, we know it's going to be financed, we want you to be comfortable as well, as important to us as it is to you. The only other thing I wanted to touch on is, the other question with respect to this application, is where will everyone park while the parking garage is being built? And we have a couple of answers to that. First, be aware that the existing building that they're in now only has 22 parking spaces, and they have 25 full-time employees right now. So already, that building is underparked, it's been for a long time, underparked according to the code, but they have never had parking issues at Legal Aid Center. During the construction of the building, or excuse me, once the building is built, during the construction of the parking garage, we have been working with, to provide parking for staff and for clients, we have been working with our neighbors. US Bank, which you may know is directly east of our project on the south, or east side of 8th Street, has given us approval to park up to 15 cars in their parking lot. We conducted a parking study for them back in August over a two-week period, that showed that their average parking occupancy was 17.5%. At no time did their parking lot exceed 15 vehicles, they have 37 spaces in their parking lot. They have plenty of space, and we've been a good neighbor with them, and they've been good to us, they wanted to help us out, and they've agreed to provide that for us. We're also in negotiation with the old FBI building, which is at 700 East Charleston, if I'm getting that correctly, it's almost directly across the street on the south side of Charleston. That building's been vacant for a couple of years, we've made contact with the owner, who lives in Minnesota, and negotiating with them for use of their parking lot across the street, which has up to 85 surface spaces, and 50 underground. So we'll be, we believe we'll be able to use that, we should have something in place with them before City Council, apparently. And then finally, as you know, on Gas and on 8th, there's a substantial amount of street parking available. It's not metered right now, and we'd be able to use that if we actually needed to, which frankly, I don't think we will. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
This item was advertised as public hearing, anybody here who wish to speak on either of these items, please go forward.
Good evening. My name is Brian Berman, and my wife and I own the property at 721 Gas Avenue, that's a northwest corner of 8th and Gas. So being immediately to the north of the existing building, and immediately to the north of this proposed parking garage, we're arguably the most affected property owner. I support Clark County Legal Services and the work that they do, and the goals that they have, and I see this as a positive development. Unfortunately, it's going to involve a bunch of dust and noise for a long time, but they've got a competent contractor in Martin Harris committed to do this, and so I have no opposition to the project. But the one thing that I sought to avoid was a situation like we have at Fourth and Clark, where we have the huge red city-owned building with no landscaping and zero lot lines and so on and so forth, and personally, I find it to be a bit of a monstrosity. And it is a problem on this particular parking garage, because it's designated as zero lot line. But I've spoken with the people at Clark County Legal Services, and they've indicated that they're going with more than the required amount of landscaping with the space between the trees, more than the code requires. They've proposed some trellis work that will have vines creeping up the 8th Street side of the parking garage, and they've indicated they'd like to add some shrubbery at ground level as well. And that's certainly enough to address my concerns, but I wanted to make it a matter of the record in this, and make certain that it wasn't a problem because of the zero lot line. That means that all of these landscaping improvements are actually going in the sidewalk, not on your property, and with that understanding. The only other point that we've discussed with them is that during the daytime, it's a nice neighborhood, but after night, a different character, shady people seems to sort of migrate in, and the existing building has lighting at the top that lights up the street quite nicely. And the existing building has lighting at the top that lights up the street quite nicely, and light equals safety. And they've also indicated that they're willing to put perimeter lighting on the top of the parking garage to illuminate Eighth Street and make it safer. And with those two understandings about the landscaping and the lighting, I do support the project.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Please go forward.
Todd Farlow, I bank across the street, U.S. Bank, and I can contend, I agree that there's never more than 10 cars in that place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to put on the record, make a comment about this added condition. On several different applications tonight, we've actually discussed whether or not conditions are really appropriate for land use applications. This probably is another of the type that is not enforceable by the city attorney's office if it weren't followed. So the question is really, is this an appropriate condition for a land use application? The thing is, site development plan reviews are for aesthetics and orientation. Our code doesn't really give us the power then to deny a building permit for failure to do something else unrelated to the action at hand. As you know, we've got two applications that are connected, but they're not. You've got two separate parcels. You've got a parking variance on one. You've got a SDR on a building for another. So again, this is one where you just have to understand that you're going to, if you approve both items, you're going to trust the applicant to get it done. We don't want to set any unjustified expectations for constituents in the audience that are listening, that I could actually go down to the RJC and enforce this condition. But having said that, it's within your complete discretion to add this condition. Just note it for the record or just move forward.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions?
I'm curious. You indicated that the, you originally were going to make this one application and were convinced to make it two. Can you talk about why that occurred and if there's any benefit or detriment to that? And are we in this situation because they're not put together? Does that make sense?
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I'm not sure we're in this situation because we didn't file it as one application. I hope that's not the case because we did actually submit it as one application and one SDR, and we were asked to separate the two applications. I'll let staff speak to as the rationale to that. You know, I guess we could have reparcelled the land and to have into one parcel before coming in, but there is a condition to parcel, to actually map the properties together, which to me, if you can do that and make it enforceable, why can't you?
But you still would have needed to construct the parking garage, and that would be a detriment in that.
Well, again, I can't, I'll let staff answer as to why they asked us to separate them, but regardless, I guess my only, the point I'd like to make with respect to our condition is, enforceable or not as it's currently written, it should show you the intent of Legal Aid to build what they're showing you they're going to build. And we're happy to work with the city attorney's office and staff and yourselves to craft a condition to give you the comfort you need to know that it's going to be built.
Director Winkle.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the reason that it was not, it isn't an issue of convincing or having not accept, well, we did not accept the application because to take in an application where they're, the application was to retain the existing building and build a new building, and that therefore requires a variance because the parking structure, they wanted to occupy the building while the other buildings were still there and prior to the parking.
Okay, so for reasons that, it just, for the sake of clarity, you need to have two.
That's right.
Okay. I guess, it sounds like the parking is the big issue, at least from the code perspective. And I know that if you were a few blocks in one direction or another, you wouldn't automatically be subject to the parking requirements. And on its face, when you read the application where it says you're requesting zero parking where, where 100, what is it, how many spaces?
118.
119?
118.
118, that sounds excessive. But as you explain it, and for the record, Mr. Rowe did meet with me and tried to help me understand the situation better, and I think I went away with that meeting with a little better understanding. My suggestion to you was to look at some of the parcels, the vacant parcels, the vacant buildings that are all around there and see if you couldn't find some sort of an agreement with it. Mr. Farlow mentioned that he banks the bank next door, and I pass that bank every single day, and one of the things that amazes me is that there are no cars there. I wish it were full. And as you said, the FBI building across the street, I think there are a couple of others. The staff report indicates that they're concerned with the recent opening of the Mexican consulate, that that will overwhelm that particular neighborhood. But what I want to get at is that what you're seeking in terms of the zero parking, even though you already provide some now, is that correct? 20?
22 spaces.
22 spaces. That's a temporary problem, right? That typically where you'd have zero, you actually do have some, but at some point in time, you will have additional parking when it's constructed.
Not just at some point in time, Commissioner Evans. Immediately after we finish the construction of the office building and get our certificate of occupancy and move the folks out of the existing building to the new one, we will immediately demolish.
So your intention is to stay in the building you're in and provide the essential services?
Yes.
Build the building to the parcel next to it, and the moment that is concluded or completed and you get your certificate of occupancy, down goes the other building and the parking lot is constructed?
That's correct.
Okay, and then that leaves you how deficient in terms of what the code requires in parking?
At that time, we will have zero parking spaces for the office building for a period of time for the construction of the parking garage. We're told that will be four to six months approximately, but we have received authority and an agreement with U.S. Bank to use up to 15 parking spaces.
But when the parking garage is constructed, how many, how deficient will it be in terms of what our code requires?
Only 22% reduction. So we'll have 92 spaces out of 118.
Okay, so you'll eventually have 92 spaces.
That's correct, Commissioner Evans.
And I wanted to point out, because I think I was looking at the area, I drove through there the other day, there is a sufficient amount of parking in the area, I think, but it would behoove you, I think, to try to work out some arrangement where your staff could park somewhere off-site. I think the real issue is that you're not overwhelming those adjacent medical offices or any other, anybody else's business, that you're, the way you're staging this, that it's not a detriment. But even if you were deficient ultimately when the parking garage is fully constructed, in my mind, a good deal of your clientele, I would imagine, are accessing public transportation and perhaps some of them even walking, because I'm assuming, being Legal Aid, that many of them don't have vehicles or if they do, they were repossessed. So, and I know that there's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic down there. My issues, and I think the staff's issues are really, that they outline, is the parking and some assurance that the garage will be built and it would be adequately parked. I don't agree, I think, I think you make a good point, that whatever the code requires, given the nature of your business, that you likely wouldn't be using all of those spaces at any given time, and it wouldn't be a big issue. I also know, the staff report says that they are contemplating putting in parking meters in the area at some point, and I think is maybe a response to the consulate. I'm not sure I agree with that, but that's not my call. But nevertheless, I think I understand what you're proposing. You're going to build the new building, occupy the old building next door, and service your clients while that's being constructed. Then you're going to move into the new building, tear down the old building next door, and build a parking garage.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turbridge?
Not to belabor the point, but in intent to summarize it, I think what we have here is a proposal to build a scaled-down project from what was previously approved. It's smaller in almost every capacity, and the variances being requested are less than what was previously approved. This project, like so many construction projects, claim to be, need to be in phases. Everyone has got on the record saying that the content is there to address the parking garage as Phase Two of the project. I think that because of the client we're dealing with here, the applicant we're dealing with here being the Legal Aid Center of Southern Nevada, a building full of officers of the court, if we can't take them at their word, we have got a larger problem than parking spaces. And so for those reasons, I think I'll go ahead and support the agenda items and the project as presented to them.
Unfortunately, all those good officers of the court are the first ones to show up with a legal paper saying, I don't want to do this sometime.
We've got a building full of guys to fight, and it'll be fun.
And if there are no other comments, I have a couple of questions. I agree, this is, in a perfect world, this is a perfect project, and phasing the project makes absolute sense. I think it's our task, at least I see it as our task, is at least to bring as much information to the forefront for those neighboring property owners so they understand what is going on and the fact that we ask the questions and we analyze this appropriately. And I haven't been to, you know, I used to manage a building Nevada Legal Services was in, and parking was always full with other tenants and them. I've been in other buildings where the state bar is in and their building's full. So I'm assuming the parking spaces, whatever are built, will be full at some point in time, and if we assume that 118 spaces is required here and we do all this, I just want everybody to understand in the neighborhood that from the time this building is complete to the time the garage is complete, in addition to construction people and different sections of the street that may be closed for construction staging and work, which happens in every project, if you took those 118 parking spaces and considered them parallel spaces at 18 feet of space for a parallel space, you come up with 2160 linear feet of parking divided by the frontage feet on all these, the typical lots downtown, that's four and a half blocks that the potential employees of this building will utilize immediately adjacent to this building. So that means every one of those property owners in that four and a half blocks should be aware that there's going to be an unrealistic burden on that parking for that period of time. And that's assuming everything goes well and the garage comes on time. As we all know, in today's economy, nothing goes perfect. So it's not that I have a problem with the project, I just want everybody to understand what we're being asked to address here. And I understand your condition answered the question that I raised, you know, how do we deal with this and if there's a trigger that guaranteed that? And I think, while I understand the city attorney's concern that it may not be enforceable, I appreciate that you reached out and tried to craft that for us. With that, the other issue that needs to be addressed is that parking down there, because I drove it today, and I was at your building earlier, and surprisingly, all those 22 spaces were full on-site and a few in the lot next door, so business is good. I don't know if that's good, but business is good. So we can't just blankly say, well, I never see people parking there, so they really don't need parking. Even though we have people riding public transit, we use the hell out of parking spaces in the downtown area. All of that parking on-street adjacent to this building has a two-hour time limit to it. That may function well for your visitors. I don't think that functions well for your employees, which would have to be addressed in another vein, because obviously, unless that's a revenue source for the city's, you know, parking fees. But with that, I'm going to support your project. I just want to put this all on the record because I think it's important to disclose what, why we see things. I think it's the right project. I think you've answered all the questions, and some of it, because of the phasing, can't be answered 100%. So we're going to have to take your organization, the members, in a little bit of faith, the property owners adjacent to you, going to have to have a little faith that we're trying to do the right thing here, and hopefully, this goes well and goes quickly.
Chairman, another quick, the, one of the issues that I think one of the commissioners wanted raised was the issue of access for handicap. During that period of time, will you make some special consideration for those people with disabilities?
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I'm glad you did raise that. We are attempting to. We obviously are going to have handicap parking within the parking garage, but during the construction of the parking garage, we do want to make sure there is parking available for handicap clients to access our facility. We have reached out to traffic engineering and spoken with them about the process by which they can come and evaluate the area and paint blue stripes on the curb, which actually we currently have in front of the existing Legal Aid Center. And they indicated us that there's, we really can't even begin that process until we have the building either under construction or built, and then they'll come out. But, so we'd like to do that. We think that's the appropriate thing to do to make sure any of the spaces in and around the area, as many as we need, can be painted that's along our property line, and we'd like to do that. We think that's the best way to address it. And then also, if I could just for a second, one of the things you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Evans, was not impacting our neighbors, and we truly don't want to do that. That's why we're reaching out to our neighbors and entering into agreements.
And I'm sure that if you can work it out, that you will. I appreciate that.
We absolutely will.
I do want to make one other, just a quick comment, because some of it's philosophical. I don't get to decide the code. I mean, the Centennial Plan, you're one block or two away, where it wouldn't automatically be imposed. Every city I've lived in and many that I've visited, they don't all have lots of parking. And I think by design, if you want a dense urban core, the idea that you have to provide X amount of parking for every person that comes in there, basically, I think, is a deterrent for a developer, given what the land costs are. It also discourages pedestrian activity. When I lived in Washington, I would park my car, and I only owned a car for a couple of years that I was there. Sometimes I'd pay the eight bucks and go into a parking garage and walk the block or two to where I needed to go. More often than not, I'd find a spot and that would be it. If that were the case, I would walk past an antique store, I'd walk past a used bookstore, I'd poke my head into here and there, and you end up with an urban vibe. You end up with people out on the street, you end up with folks that don't just drive right up to the door, get out of their car, do what they need to do and get back in. I think it encourages a greater sense of community. I think it's good for commerce. And at some point, I'd like to see us revisit some of these codes because, as Mr. Farlow indicated, that bank next door, and the Albertsons that I go to every other day, has hundreds and hundreds of parking spaces in for five or six cars. Now, I'd like to hope that they're busier than that and that they'll survive and that they'll all do well in business, but I have to wonder if a substantial part of the footprint of that building is dedicated to the parking, are we doing all of ourselves a disservice, particularly in the urban core? So that's my soapbox. I will be supporting this, and if you're ready for a motion, I'm ready.
Yes, Commissioner Evans, real quick.
Just to echo a little bit of what Commissioner Evans said, I was going right
Just to echo a little bit of what Commissioner Evans said, I was going right down that, you know, here's another option. During that time, period of construction, maybe you can mandate that those employees utilize alternate commute choices to work and have them take the bus. I mean, the Regional Transportation Commission has a number of programs that actually reward folks for taking alternate commute choices. One of them is their Club Ride program. Legal Services probably joined Club Ride, take advantage of the incentive, pass them down to the employees. And what you may find over a period of time is, you may get some employees in shape, you may find production of those employees go up because they feel healthier and they're actually living healthy. So just a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to say, I think this is a great project. It's beautiful, it's visionary, and it's badly needed. And I want to thank Nevada Legal Aid for what they've done, what they're doing, and what I expect they'll continue to do in the future. And although I understand staff's concerns, I have full confidence that the representations that were made today, whether they're enforceable or not, are going to be met. So thank you. You have my support.
Any other comments? Motion?
On Agenda Item Number 45, the variance 39099, I think that a sufficient explanation has been given, and that, Mr. Rowe, you adequately met your burden, and my motion would be for approval.
Is the motion for approval? If there are other comments, please cast your vote. She's abstaining. And that is approved with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 46?
Item 46, the variance 39100. Once again, I think the applicant has made a good case, and my motion would be for approval.
Please cast your vote. It is approved with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 47?
Item 47 is the site development review. And, Mr. Rowe, you had mentioned something about an additional condition. Was that what we discussed earlier, or is it?
Yes, with the site development plan review for the building, the condition regarding financing that I submitted, if you're willing to add that on.
And that's the one that the city attorney said wouldn't be enforceable, but you would make a representation on the record that you're going to have the dough and you're going to build the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So my motion would be for approval. And before the motion, the landscape that is shown on our backup, the trees will go along the sidewalk along Charleston, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. On Charleston, and then along Eighth, and down to Gas, and then down Gas to this property line.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add, with respect to our neighbor, I just want to put on the record that we do want to work with him, and the representations we made to him with respect to the landscaping, particularly facing his property on Gas. We haven't had time to put together conditions to add that in.
Do you go that far? Do you go down to?
No, but he's directly north of us, so we definitely want to address that, and just, we just want to put on the record that we'll have those conditions for the city council to make sure that's taken care of.
But the building itself, that's for the parking garage, as it approaches Gas?
I'm sorry, your question is?
But the tree scape is substantially what we've seen in our backup. What I'm getting at is, I want a sufficient amount of trees along Charleston, because I know you're deficient in some planters and things like that, but I really like the look of the trees, and I'm trying to attain a tree canopy that gives that pedestrian look.
And that's the intent that we're trying to achieve with respect to those, the trees and the way we lay them out, is to build a canopy along Charleston and down Eighth and Gas.
Okay. So the motion would just be for the, as read, again, the motion would be for approval, without the condition that you've offered that we can enforce. But I think we all appreciate.
Please cast your vote. And that is approved with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 48?
No, we go right on to 48?
Yes.
Okay, the variance is 39458. And again, my motion would be for approval.
Please cast your vote. And that is approved with Commissioner Quinn's abstaining. Item 49?
And the site development review, there's nothing that we need to add to that, is that correct? Okay. Ms. Wheeler, no? So my motion would be for approval, and once again, I appreciate you working with
And that is approved with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. These all items are all going to be considered final action? 49, final action in the absence of an appeal.
Commissioners, thank you very much for your time.
Good luck. And raise all that money and get this thing built all in one project. Thank you. Item, we're going to take item 50, then we're going to take a short break. So, item 50, VAR 39361, applicant owner, Yadiet Saraf, to allow an eight-foot corner side yard setback, where 15 feet is required for an existing room addition at 4805 Apewana Lane.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chairman? The subject site contains an existing... Mr. Chairman?
Everything went okay?
The subject site contains an existing 1,040-square-foot, single-family dwelling with a carport. The applicant enclosed the carport without permits, creating a 312-square-foot room addition, which encroaches into the corner side yard setback area, resulting in the need for a variance. Staff recommends denial, as this is a self-imposed hardship. If denied, the applicant will be required to return the carport to its original condition. Please note that there are additional letters of support for the items since publication.
Good evening. Dennis Rusk, architect, 3530 West Torino Avenue, representing the applicant. I was brought in after everything was done, and the owners had asked me to assist them in getting it through the process to beg for forgiveness. The best that I could figure out is that this carport was added sometime after the building was built, several, several years ago. And whether it was out of ignorance or out of misunderstanding, they enclosed the carport without permit. And they asked me to do a set of drawings to process for a building permit and to apply for the variance for enclosing this carport. The mitigating issues are, that I can see, is that there's quite a grade difference between the sidewalk and the actual grade where this carport is. I think it's about three or four feet from the sidewalk up to the grade, and then they have a block wall. And then from the front of the property all the way down, they've got a block wall that is low, very low, that goes down to the corner. And as you can see here, so there's, there's a difference here between these grades and this block wall that's along for the sidewalk. And this area here is the actual enclosed carport. So the, to complete, to comply with the setback, they would have to take down the entire end of the house, as well as the existing carport that was built several years ago. And we're asking for the variance. Any questions? I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you. This was an advertised public hearing. If we wish to speak on this item, please go forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I have been waiting for this for a long time, because I, we have right now an architect that can answer some questions. Commissioner Trobridge, I brought this up with you again. The code requires that a structure that is going to be occupied has to be number-one grade fir. The only people in town that sell that is 84 Lumber in Houston, which is miles away. If they go to Lowe's or Builder's Square, the old Builder's Square, or the old Home Base, or Home Depot, they all sell number-two grade. So I'm wondering, you know darn well, I just, you know, I just know that anybody that encloses this has used, went down to Lowe's, or Home Depot, or Builder's Square, or one of the old places, Ollies, or wherever, and put in and bought the number-two grade fir. So I'm wondering, I'm addressing this to the architect that we have now, how do we know that the materials that were used in this structure that has already been built are, are code-approved things? That, that's my question. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Director Wheeler?
That's a requirement of the conditions.
How do we know?
That's what building inspectors do. They go out and have inspections of existing conditions.
And there any others we should speak on this item? Seeing no enclosed public hearing, commissioners, comments, questions, motion?
How long do you think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Wheeler.
How long do you think that this has been, was constructed? Do you have any idea?
I'm guessing that the carport portion that is, would be clearly non-compliant as well, because it was the eight feet away.
Twenty years ago, five years ago?
I would say twenty years ago for the carport, and the enclosure was probably done about two, three years ago.
And then, I'm not seeing the pictures, so trying to get a visual for the, where it's at. Do the neighbors, are the neighbors okay with it? Those are always the issues that I ask. Are the neighbors okay with it?
The ones I spoke to were, yes.
No one?
There would not seem to be an objection to it. In fact, what they've done is, you know, they've stuck out the outside, they dressed it up, they made it look really nice.
So how did you, did someone bust them? I mean, how did it come?
Apparently, because they called me and said that they had a notice of non-compliance.
But the neighbors are apparently not opposed to it, or they're not here, and they haven't written letters, or?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, the conditions of approval require that they bring it up to code, whatever that is, and it be inspected. Is that correct, Ms. Wheeler?
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair, yes, that is a requirement, that they do obtain their building permits and final inspections. Additionally, to answer your question, we have three comments in support, and they are within the notification area.
Okay. And then lastly, I'm, and this isn't directed to you as an architect, but I'm curious, this is not the original homeowner, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When you purchase a house, don't they send somebody out, an appraiser, and don't they measure it? And at some point, wouldn't there be an issue with, and this is for?
Maybe, maybe not. There's, there's no guarantee. Depends on how it's financed.
So you're paying an appraiser, and then a title company that signs off on it, and you may not be buying what is listed on the legal documents?
It may not be code compliant, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have a problem with it, as long as, you know, it goes through the process and is deemed to be safe.
Well, that's what they asked me to do, is do a set of documents, what I did, which I did, which are going to be used by the building inspector to inspect it, to make sure that both the materials and the methods and means of construction comply with the chapter 2006 of the IBC, I mean, the IRC, excuse me.
Commissioner Quinns?
Yeah, that's all well and done, but, Margot, let me ask you, we're going to, if we approve this, we're approving the variance, and then he's going to go out and have all these inspections done to make sure it's safe? Doesn't that sound a little, shouldn't he, shouldn't he come in here and say, "I've had it all done and inspected, it all meets code, and now I'd like to ask for the variance?"
Not if we want to have him tear it down, you shouldn't.
The building department would not go any further until you took action, and then, then they'll take their action.
If I may, we can't approve the plot plan if this variance is not approved.
Okay. I have no problem with it. I've just looked at it, and, so I make a motion for approval of item 50, VAR 39361, subject to all staff recommendation and condition.
Here's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote.
And if I could make one other note, it's not my habit of asking for forgiveness. I'm always in here asking for approval first. But they got jammed, and I was just here to help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is approved, and that is final action in the absence of an appeal. Thank you. We're going to take a short break.
Thank you very much.
First of all, Detective Douglas, that is performed. It's very professional. Well, it's necessary to raise the construction spec, which is less than what you're working with, and everything locked back inside. Would I go down to the... I found out this, the person that was in that, you know, it's true. I have to go out to the people for, I'm not being told, and I had to... And it's a piece of construction that requires that there's... Yes. 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 not, we're 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 not, we're[553.12]
We're gonna go ahead and start in a minute. Okay, we're gonna go to item fifty-one V A R three-nine-four-three-three, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner D N W Inc., to allow a sixty-five-foot-tall off-premise sign where fifty feet is the maximum height allowed at one-twenty North Jones Boulevard. And companion item or related item is S U P three-nine-four-three-two for a proposed sixty-five-foot-tall fourteen-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at one-twenty North Jones Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, I need to abstain from items fifty-one and fifty-two for the reasons I stated during the one motion, one vote
Okay.
portion of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, these requests would allow the construction of a new off-premise sign located to the east of an existing off-premise sign which will be removed. Pursuant to Title nineteen-fourteen, the existing sign was previously relocated due to the expansion of the U.S. ninety-five and raised to fifty feet in height, which is the maximum height allowed at the location. The new sign is proposed at sixty-five feet in height resulting in the need for a variance. The applicant is also proposing to remove an existing on-premise sign, but removal of this sign would not prevent the installation of any new on-premise signs at the location that conformed to the requirements of Title nineteen-fourteen. Staff recommends denial as the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances pursuant to Title nineteen-eighteen-zero-seven-zero that would substantiate the request of variance. If denied, the existing signs would remain as they are and no new off-premise sign would be permitted. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for this items' publication.
Okay. Before we begin, I have one question for staff here. We show a variance for height, and then we show an S U P for a sign. We're talking about the same exact sign, right?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we don't want, because there's two, they're on two separate parcels today, yet we show the same address. I just wanted to make sure we had this clear.
The existing sign will be removed, and the two before you today are for the new sign.
The two items here?
Are for the new proposed sign.
Okay.
The existing sign that's there will be removed when this one's constructed.
Go ahead, can you?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As staff indicated on the record, this particular existing sign is located adjacent to the freeway, that would be the ninety-five, near the Jones exit. If you can turn your attention to the overhead, okay, it's over here. This gives you an idea of what it looks like if you're traveling northbound on ninety-five. You can see the existing on-premise sign here that says space for lease. You have our existing sign at a height of fifty feet here, and then there's another on-premise sign in that location. We're asking to move our existing fifty-foot-tall off-premise sign about fifty feet east in order to gain power to the site. I don't know if you noticed when staff was running through some of the pictures that went in your backup, there was a large container next to our sign. When we had to relocate our sign due to the freeway widening, for the last four years, we've been on a generator for power because we haven't been able to get power to the site. So by moving the sign over about fifty feet, we would be able to get power to the site. Therefore, we wouldn't have that container next to our billboard any longer. We'd be using power that would come in from N V Energy. If we are able to move our billboard to the property right adjacent to that, again, which is about fifty feet over, this would be the new view, again, heading northbound on ninety-five. And you can see what's gone is the white sign that said space for lease. One of the things that we worked on with the property owner on the site that we'd like to move to is that they would remove that existing sign. So visually, you get one less sign as you're traveling northbound on ninety-five. With respect to the height, the reason why we're asking for variance, which is item number, or, excuse me, I guess it would be item number fifty-one, is because though, when you're traveling southbound on ninety-five, you can see the sign, when you're actually coming, excuse me, when you're traveling northbound on ninety-five, you can see the sign, when you're coming southbound on ninety-five, the only thing that you can see is, again, that sign that I referenced early on that said space for lease, which we were proposing to remove. That sign actually makes it over the top of the sound wall, but you can see just a little tiny edge, which is our sign right there, which you can't see when you're traveling southbound on ninety-five. So the request for the variance would be to allow us to get over the top of this sound wall so that you could see the sign from both directions when you're traveling on the freeway. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this was appetizer public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on the side? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close public hearing. Can Mr. Chairman comment, ask questions?
Commissioner. Sure, thank you. I think that the net impact of this is that we lose one sign along the freeway. One sixty-five-foot sign, we lose one sixty-five-foot sign and gain one, but we also lose the fifty-foot sign.
That's correct.
The building goes away. So the net impact is one less sign in the general study there. I think it's a move in the right direction, so I'll support it. Any other comments?
Any other comments, or motion?
No, the comments ready for motion. Item number fifty-one, variance thirty-nine-four-thirty-three. Make the recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Please cast your vote. With regards to item fifty-one, that is approved with Commissioner Moody abstaining. Item fifty-two?
In regards to item number fifty-two, special use permit thirty-nine-four-thirty-two. Make the motion for approval, subject to... Nothing.
If there's a motion, please cast your vote. And that is approved with Commissioner Moody abstaining.
Thank you very much.
These items go on City Council on eleven-seventeen.
Thank you.
Item fifty-three and fifty-four, related items. Item fifty-three V A R three-nine-four-six-eight, applicant Richmond American Homes, owner Providence Two-O-seven LLC, to allow the garage setback to be seven feet or less where five feet or less is required. A front yard's second-story setback of three feet where eight feet is required. Yard sec, ten feet is required on lots twenty-one and one-oh-three. Companion item is R O C three-nine-four-zero, review of condition number one of a previously approved variance, V A R one-three-two-four-five, to modify the requirement to fire sprinkle all lots by limiting the requirement to lots twenty-two, ninety-two, ninety-eight, one-oh-two, one-thirty-five, one-thirty-six only.
Mr. Chairman, this variance is to allow the garage setback to be seven feet or less where five feet or less is required in the front yard, second-story setback of three feet where eight feet is required on two-hundred-and-seven undeveloped single-family residential lots, and the rear and side yard setbacks of seven feet where ten feet is required on lots twenty-one and lots one-oh-three. Single-family residential subdivision is located at the southwest corner of Farm and Wallop Highway in Cliffshead's master plan community. Staff is recommending denial since neither the applicant nor the master developer has presented any compelling justification for a hardship. If this application is denied, the developer will need to submit plans for models that conform to the Cliffshead Site Planning Guidelines. Please note, we've received additional letters of protest since publication. In regards to the review of condition, the applicant is proposing to modify the condition to limit the sprinkler requirements to lots twenty-two, ninety-two, ninety-eight, one-oh-two, one-thirty-five, and one-thirty-six. Twelve units have been constructed by the previous developer. The current developer wants to sprinkle six of the remaining two-hundred-and-seven undeveloped lots. Staff is recommending denial. Note, the comment from the fire department is as follows. Fire sprinklers are required based on the narrow streets and street signs, as well as the approved variance that allows a side yard setback of two feet. Per the City of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Department, the applicant must be in full compliance with the approved civil drawings. All buildings shall be protected by fire sprinkler systems. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the review of condition.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Bob Gronhour, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. To my left is Brian Walsh with Richmond American Homes. The first thing that I'd like to do is get your attention to the overhead. And I'd like to give you a little bit of background with respect to this application before I actually get into the variance and the review of condition. First of all, this is not the first or last time that you're gonna hear one of these stories. As you know, over the last couple of years, what has happened here is developers who previously, from about three, four years ago, had zoning land use entitlements on properties, began or commenced construction for single-family developments. And like this development here, started, cut out the lot, so you can see on the overhead here, and started to build some of the homes itself. As a matter of fact, in this subdivision here, which is located off of Farm and Wallop Highway, it's known as a subdivision known as Emerson at Providence. One of the problems, just like all the other subdivisions located in Las Vegas Valley here, many of them, is the developer then went bankrupt on this piece of property here or was foreclosed upon. And by being foreclosed upon, what you have here is you have twelve lots that are developed. Actually, this is one of the very few cases that you actually have the full amenities in place and that are still in good condition today. As you can see in the middle here, you have a pool, a tot lot, some of the amenities within the project itself for the twelve homes. But the unfortunate thing is, is what you have is it becomes somewhat desolate. As you can take a look at some of the pictures here that I'm showing you, is this is for the twelve existing homeowners who live in this subdivision, this is what they live with every day outside of the vacant lots that you see here. So part of the story that I actually want to tell you is, as you know, what happens is then a new developer comes in. In this case, this new developer is Richmond American Homes. The problem that you have or the challenge with these new, with the subdivision here, you already have lots that are cut out. Everything's graded, as I'm showing you here. You already have homes that have already been built by a previous developer. The problem that you have when you have a new home builder coming in is they gotta fit their lots, or, excuse me, they gotta fit their homes on these lots. And that's why we're here today asking for a couple of the variances and the review of condition, so we can continue on and build out the subdivision and make it complete. Instead of the, somewhat of the eyesore that you see here, if you were one of the neighbors living here, you can understand the problems that you, or concerns that you would have. The first thing that I'd like to do is go to the first variance. And as you read through the staff report and you look at the notification, you will see that we are asking for a driveway setback to be at seven feet where five feet or eighteen feet is required on two-hundred-and-seven lots. Now, the first thing that you think, the first thing that I think when I read this and I go through the staff report is I see two-hundred-and-seven lots within the subdivision itself, all having seven-foot driveways where they're supposed to have five feet or eighteen feet. Well, maybe to make a little bit more ease on this application or make you a little bit more comfortable to approve this application, not all the lots are gonna require seven-foot driveways where five feet or eighteen feet is required, for two reasons. One is, we have four floor plans here. On the four-floor plans, only one floor plan is gonna be required to have a seven-foot setback to the garage face itself. So, and as you know, when you develop a subdivision, you don't develop just one floor plan itself. That's why you have four floor plans to develop, to have a variety of elevations in homes within that subdivision. The second reason is, as you can see on the overhead here, which I believe makes it more palpable to accept this variance here, is it's not for the full two-hundred-and-seven lots. As a matter of fact, what we have here, you can see here, is it's highlighted in green. The variance is only gonna be for a maximum no more than twenty-eight lots. So if you're inclined to approve this application, we'd only want it to apply to no more than twenty-eight lots within the subdivision. Now, the hardship that we have here, the legal hardship, as you can see here, the streets that run east and west, and on some of the smaller streets and the stub streets here, requires us to have a steeper grade, excuse me, the driveway grade itself is gonna be steeper if we are at five feet. In order to bring in less than fourteen percent per the design requirements in Providence, we'd have to have it up at six to seven feet to the face of garage. And again, it's not for the entire development. As a matter of fact, some of the things that we do have here on our other plans, some of our plans we have at eighteen feet, we have one plan at eighteen foot to the face of the garage. We have two other plans that are at eight feet to, or, excuse me, five feet to the face of the garage itself. So with that being said, we would hope that you feel a little bit more comfortable knowing that it isn't for the two-hundred-and-seven lots, but it's for the lots that we're pointing out here, which would not exceed more than twenty-eight lots itself. And the other thing I do want to point out, the difference between this project and the project that the previous home builder was constructing, we have all two-car garages on these homes. And the previous project had two-floor plans for single-car garages and two-floor plans for two-car garages. The next variance... The next variance is for the front setback reduction to the second story itself. Now, as you can see here, again, it's along the similar lines of my previous argument for the driveway setback approval for that variance. What we have here is, the request has come in for a blanket to be a front setback to the second story of approximately three feet. However, not all the lots need that. The lots that we have highlighted in yellow, however, it comes out to about sixty-eight lots. Sixty-eight lots here is where we would need the front setback requirement to the second story to be three feet. Now, we have two of our four-floor plans will have that requirement on the lots that are pointed out here. So if you're inclined to also approve this variance, we'd accept a condition that we cannot have no more, we cannot have more than sixty-eight lots within the subdivision to be setback at that requirement. The...
Yeah.
The other variance is in the two purple areas as I'm showing you. And that's essentially, we have four-floor plans, but those floor plans would not fit on those lots. We have a little bit of a notch on the exterior of those properties there, and we're asking for approval for those two variances. With respect to the review of condition for the fire sprinklers, currently, when this project was approved, it was approved with the courtyards and the side yard setbacks to those homes were at three feet, okay? Actually, two feet with the eaves itself, so you have separation anywhere from four feet between the eaves of the homes or six feet from home to home. And that was agreed to as a condition of approval of the application from the previous builder, which sets us differently, and the reason why we're asking not to have that condition imposed today is for, it's two reasons. One is, the home side yard setbacks within the subdivision itself are five feet. In other words, you're gonna have, it's your conventional, traditional, whatever word, buzzword you wanna use or term of art, is it's your conventional home where you have five feet between the property line and the home, so you have ten feet between the homes, which is not what you typically have in some of the subdivisions, especially in Providence. So we believe that's one of the reasons for justification. But the second reason for justification is because there's no other development in the Providence master plan. We checked with the master developer today, is there's a similar project, it's on Lennar, it's called Arbor Ridge, that has some stub streets within their subdivision, and similar to what we're proposing here, what's already built, and they have three-foot side yard setbacks. And they don't have any condition that requires them to come in to do fire sprinklers on the property itself. However, one of the things I do want to point out is there are a couple of areas where you see highlighted in black, some of the areas that staff has pointed out, that we would still sprinkle those areas or those homes. And the reason is, is because the lot widths in some of those lots there that we're pointing out on the overhead, and it's a handful of them, are at thirty-three feet when all the other lot widths within the subdivision itself is thirty-five feet in width. And so in those areas or in those lots, we would actually do fire sprinkler, or fire sprinkler those homes because the way we look at it, the justification is, is if we continue to do three-foot setbacks or three-foot side yard setbacks in the stub streets in these areas, we would agree to keep the fire sprinklers on all the lots. But when you're going back to five-foot side yard setbacks, we believe that meets the intent of where the homes were built years ago with the five-foot side yard setback. So with that being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. This was appetizer public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on the side? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Pollard, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Since this developer's taking over an old project, has this developer built anything similar like this around the valley? And do they have an obligation to that?
We'll find out. Please come forward.
Yes, Juanita, on behalf of Charleston Neighborhood Preservation, we don't understand it. Let's say I go out there to buy a home, and would I know that I had, that I was, if I choose a home that has fewer sprinklers, I have less sprinklers as far as my home is concerned for the square footage? Or would I presume that they were all sprinkled the same? I just feel that this is a risky buy for me.
If you had a home that was sprinkled, it would meet all the sprinkler requirements. It would not be, you know, we're not, I don't, there's no way they can shorten the number of sprinklers because the house is a different size. They have, that's a specific fire code on where the sprinklers are. But if you had a house that wasn't sprinkled, you wouldn't have any sprinklers. So... These are fire sprinklers, internally.
Yes, that, yes, that's what we're talking about, safety, yes. Yes, the safety. So would the, so are they getting fewer sprinklers per square foot of their home?
No.
Or is the... So the homes are smaller, these homes are smaller? Or is there a real understanding?
Here's what is being proposed. The original idea was that all the homes be sprinkled, to a certain extent to protect the home. That was promoted at the time with the thinking that if you've got these small lots where the homes are close together, the likelihood of a fire jumping from one structure to the next was greater. And that was what was in place. What the proponents are asking for now is their lots are larger and there's only a few lots where they're close together. And they want to comply with the requirement for the smaller lots, which are like thirty-five feet wide.
With more distance between.
The smaller lots would still have to be sprinkled. The larger lots, where there's a greater separation between the two structures, not to have to be sprinkled. That's the gist with the request for waivers on the sprinklers. It's tied to the size of the lot and the separation between the two structures.
Yeah. And that is the legal description as far as code is concerned?
As far as the lot size, they want to stipulate that it's, just applies to those lots that are thirty-five feet wide would have to be sprinkled, not to...
And so that would be according to code?
We can set it here, I guess.
If that would be...
It would be permissible if it's approved by the planning commission and the city council.
Okay, because, the way we were looking at it is, is if you were going out, and you would just presume that each house was as safe as another as far as being, as having the fire sprinklers, I guess we'll call them fire sprinklers, within the home. And this sounded to us as though not all homes would be equally safe, but...
It's the ones that had the higher hazard.
If code includes the distance between homes...
The controlling factor is the distance between homes. The thought being that the closer you are together, the more likely that the fire would jump from one structure to the next.
Yes, and that is included in the code?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that.
No problem. Anybody else wish to speak on the side?
Oh, I thought we closed it. I'm sorry.
I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Yes, now, just to give, while I'm on a roll here, please, excuse me. They have, in order to give the staff a heads-up regarding additional conditions, if I understand what's being proposed here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in regards to the garage setbacks, you're not talking about the entire two-hundred-and-seven lots. You're talking about you want a variance for twenty-eight lots, no more than twenty-eight lots. In regards to the second-story setback of three feet rather than eight, again, you're not talking about the full two-hundred-and-seven lots, you're talking about sixty-eight of the lots. And in regards to the setback of seven feet rather than ten feet, you're only, rear and side yard setbacks, you're only talking about two lots, not the full two-oh-seven. And if I was speaking correctly in regards to the Charleston Heights Neighborhood Preservation questions, you are talking about just six lots that are the undersized lots, the thirty-five by fifty-seven?
Thirty, they're thirty-three by fifty-seven. The smaller lots would require the fire sprinklers. And we called those lots out in the staff report. They're in the staff report.
And those are potentially four conditions that might wind up being asked for when a motion's made.
Any other comments, Commissioner Moody?
Yes, thank you. I know that one of the recommendations, one of the conditions is that you'll post within the garage regarding the driveway that it's subject to the condition that parking is not allowed in the driveway. Will you, perhaps there's a homeowner that will buy property sight unseen. Is there some way to disclose to them this requirement?
I believe through the purchase and sell, you're gonna be able to deal with the C C N Rs. If the C C N Rs, that's a requirement as a condition to put in the C C N Rs to give that disclosure, that's where you would see it. And then, yeah, actually, it's to be the C C N R document.
Okay, thank you.
Does the subdivision have an H O A?
Yes, yes, it does. It has an H O A because they're taking care of the pool and all the amenities that are there today.
Good. I'm, I can support your motion. I just think it's commendable that Richmond American will come in and finish out a development that would be blight if nothing else happens. And I think we should at least work with you a little bit so that you can get your product on there. And I'm just commend you for coming in and picking that up. Thank you.
Mr. Gronhour?
I wanna take a, just a quick comment, sorry, excuse me.
Commissioner.
Yes, is it that your product, you can't, why is it that you don't wanna complete with the failed builder started? Is it that you...
Is it that you, there's not a market for it or you don't have that capability or...
Two of their four product series have three foot side yards, which we don't think is appropriate in today's market. We think it's more appropriate to do five foot side yards. It's more standard product. Two of their product series have single car garages and we just think today we're going back to a more traditional type of product that you can fit on such a small lot and that's a two car garage. So every one of our product series have a two car garage. So we don't want to build, you know, two of Wilmington's plans. We don't have a license to build any of their plans, but even if we did, we don't think it's appropriate in today's market to build two of those. And narrower side yards, you know, we just think the buyers want to go back to more traditional 10 feet between homes.
Is there going to be a visual distinction between your product and theirs?
Elevation wise, we're going to be very similar. We try to have our product fit color wise, elevation wise with the 12 homes that are there. Uh, we think it will be a difference between six feet between homes and 10, of course, it's going to look better.
But I mean, it won't look like you could clearly tell there were two separate builders in two very different versions.
You probably won't be able to tell. The colors will be very similar.
Any other comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, with regard to item number 53, VAR 39468, recommend approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
And that would clarify those, uh, numbers of the 28 lots for the driveway?
Yeah, yes. I mean, no more than 28 lots, um, for the, uh, setback to the garage, um, with respect to the second story, uh, livable front setback.
No more than 68.
No more than 68. And we would do the disclosure for the, uh, no parking in the driveway for those seven foot driveways.
And two lots at the seven foot lots.
If you can flip the board over and I can, we can clarify the 68 lots.
We're not going to count each lot. We're going to take staff's word on, on individual lot numbers. Is that good?
No, if I can, if I...
We don't have those lot numbers at this time, so...
We, we can give the number of lots. I, I presume that...
What I'm showing is that the no more than 28 lots should be allowed the first story setback, um, requested. No more than 68 lots to have the second story setback requested and no more than two lots for the side and rear yard setback requested.
To be clear, if you could put the plan up on the...
Can we go to the overhead?
Okay. All the lots that are not highlighted are considered court, court streets. All the lots that face a court street are allowed to have a three foot setback on the second story.
Because they're four in front of us today.
Okay, for the eight foot, yes, for the eight foot, not the three foot.
Right, I just wanted to be clear that we're still on the lots that are not highlighted. We will still have setbacks in, in our second story setbacks. It only, well, it's...
That's not part of what we're talking about today.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Mr. Chairman, just before we vote, I, I'm, just a, a thought, I, we have, uh, Mr. Chair, and we were commenting that all the players are back. We've got Mr. Borgel, Mr. Brown, Ms. Lazovich, Mr. Naster, you know, Mr. Rowe, the, the whole gang is here. Um, and I'm pleased to see that, you know, we've got something to do. My question though is, you guys are building more homes. What about the thousands that are out there that are empty? I mean, we've got a community full of empty houses and you're continuing to build homes. I don't get it. I, maybe I'm just not that bright.
I'm going to let Brian answer that.
If you refer to foreclosed homes or vacant homes that have been foreclosed down by the bank, I mean, we don't, new home builders don't consider that direct competition. Someone who's going to come in and buy one of our new homes, that particular buyer, that couple, that family is not going to be the same person that goes and buys a foreclosed home. The, the mechanics of buying a foreclosed home from a bank are, are so involved and take so much time that typically by time a typical couple, a typical person who's going to come in and buy one of our homes, goes to buy a foreclosed home, there's always multiple offers, they don't qualify fast enough. So it's really two different buyers. A buyer for a foreclosed home is different.
I'm seeing that lots of these communities are empty and there's lots of empty homes, whether they're all foreclosed or they were never sold to begin with. I, I just, I, I question and not being in the business, it just doesn't make sense to me that we continue to build and yet we have a great inventory of homes.
The foreclosed homes will affect our appraisals, but the foreclosed homes won't take our buyers away, uh, potential buyers.
Thank you. Commissioner, would you agree with your motion?
I renew my motion for approval, subject to staff conditions. As amended.
There is a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved and this will go into city council on 11/17. Item 54, ROC 39470.
Uh, there's no further discussion on that. I also recommend approval of item 54, ROC 39470, subject to staff conditions. Was there any amendments on that?
No. Motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that item is approved and that will go into city council also on November 17th.
Thank you very much and it's good to see you tonight.
Good evening. Now we go to items 55 and 56. 55, VAR 39475, applicant owner Richmond American Homes to allow an eight foot solid front yard wall where a five foot wall with two feet solid and three feet open is the maximum height allowed at, uh, 6315 and 6335 El Campo Grande. And item 56, SDR 39474, major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review to reduce the front yard setbacks from 20 feet to 10 feet, side yard setbacks from nine feet to five feet, and to add new model homes for a 32 lots residential subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, the requested variance for wall height for the two northernmost lots in the subject site would reinstate a similar request that was previously approved but allowed to expire. As the conditions of the site have not changed since the previous request was approved, staff is recommending approval of the variance. The requested amendment to the site development plan review would provide for reduced front and side yard setbacks within an approved residential subdivision to accommodate additional model home plans proposed for the site. The reduced setbacks will not result in any increase in density. Previous conditions regarding building height on specific lots will remain in place and the requested changes will be compatible with the adjacent development. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested amendment. If denied, the site can only be developed in conformance with the previously approved site development plan review. Please note that there are additional letters of protest for the items since publication.
You're in agreement with all staff's conditions of approval?
Yes, I am.
Okay. This was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you. How was it that we approved an eight foot solid wall? How, how did that come about?
We'll look into that. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, Commissioners, would you move it?
No further discussion. Uh, recommend approval pursuant to staff's recommendation and with all conditions.
There's a motion for approval, item 55, subject to all staff's conditions. Please cast your vote. And that is approved in the absence of an appeal. That is final action. Item 56.
Uh, also recommend approval of SDR 39474. I don't believe there are any conditions on that.
There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved in the absence of an appeal. That is final action.
If I may, just for the record, there are conditions, there are no condition changes.
Yes. Item 57, 58, and 59 are related items. Item 57, VAR 39487, applicant Cooper Sands Inc., owner Rancho Torrey Development LLC to allow 252 parking spaces where 259 are required at 4660 North Rancho Drive. Item 58, SUP 39488 for a 120 bit convalescent care facility. Item 59, SDR 39485, major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review to replace buildings three, four, and five, and six with one two-story building and to replace buildings seven and eight with one two-story building and to add a second driveway access to Torrey Pines Drive.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this request is to redevelop a previously approved 10-building office complex into a six-building convalescent care facility. Proposed site changes include combining six approved office building pads into two two-story convalescent care buildings housing a total of 120 beds. The project will eliminate 53 existing parking spaces and add 37,024 square feet of floor area to the site, resulting in the need for a variance for seven parking spaces. The convalescent care facility will be compatible with the surrounding adjacent development and meets all requirements of Title 19 with the exception of required parking. The applicant has presented the evidence of a unique circumstance related to the shape of the lot that would result in undue hardship upon the owner. Furthermore, the deviation is less than 3% and will not negatively affect the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of all requests. If denied, the site could only be developed in conformance to the previously approved site development plan review. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for the items since publication.
Good evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, Richard Gargiago, 3005 West Horizon Ridge Parkway. Here on behalf of the applicant on this matter, uh, for the record, we do understand and concur with all, uh, staff's, uh, conditions and recommendations. And really with that, uh, I'll answer any questions right now.
Okay, this was advertised public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
There's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
On agenda item number 57, the variance 39487, uh, with regard to the parking spaces, I note, uh, it's a convalescent center, right? And I'm assuming that the lot is relatively empty.
Exactly.
So my motion would be for approval following, uh, I believe the staff recommendation, it's very minor deviation, but I would recommend it anyway, so motion for approval.
There's a motion for approval on item 57. If there are no further comments, please cast your vote. And has approval, approved and that is, uh, final action in the absence of an appeal?
Item number 58, the SUP, uh, 39488, uh, once again, following the recommendation of the staff, my motion would be for approval.
There's a motion for approval, please cast your vote. That is approved and that is final action in the absence of an appeal.
And finally, agenda item number 59, the site development review, uh, SDR 39485, once again, following the recommendation of staff, motion for approval.
There's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approval, approved and that is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Again, thank you Commissioners, good evening.
Now we've got item 60, SUP 39365, applicant Money Tree Inc., owner Katz M. LLC, for an auto title loan used within an existing 2,681 square foot financial institution specified with a waiver to allow a zero foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required at 9470 West Sahara Avenue.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible in harmonies with the existing and surrounding land uses and recommends approval. Please note if this request is denied, the auto title loan use cannot be, uh, would not be permitted at this location. Please note we've received additional protests since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Greg Borgel, 300 South Fourth Street. We certainly appreciate the staff's favorable comments. I would point out to you, if we could get the technician to go to the overhead that I've displayed, that the waiver before you, which we certainly respect, uh, the situation on why there is a waiver, the waiver before you operates, uh, and correctly according to the law, which measures the separation from residential, uh, by, uh, the boundary of the property we're on. In point of fact, the business here is nowhere near the boundary of the property. So in point of fact, we are honoring as a practical matter, any required separation from any residential use and we would hope that you would follow the staff recommendation. We do accept the conditions.
Okay, this item was advertised public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Commissioners, comments?
I'm ready to make a motion on the, on the item, but before I do, I'd like to just make it clear to anyone listening that approval of this item will not permit any storage of vehicles, uh, at this site whatsoever. That's correct?
That's correct, though. They have no desire to do that in any event.
With that, uh, understanding in regards to item number 60, special use permit 39365, make a motion to support staff's recommendation for approval subject to certain conditions.
There's a motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved and that is final action in the absence of an appeal. Now we go to item 61, SUP 39367, applicant Money Tree Inc., owner Katz M. LLC, for an auto title loan used within an existing 2,291 square foot non-conforming financial institution specified with waivers to allow zero foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required, a 900 foot, 970 foot distance separation from a financial institution specified where 1,000 feet is required, and a 25-hour operation where 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM is allowed at 7291 West Lake Mead Boulevard.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, uh, staff, uh, is unable to support the requested waivers of the non-conforming financial institution, uh, and the auto title loan and is recommending denial. Staff is also unable to support the extended hours of operation. Please note that we've received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Greg Borgel, again, 300 South Fourth Street. Uh, the situation here is in part similar to the previous item we heard, item 60. We certainly respect the staff's point of view that there are several waivers here and that there's an implication of incompatibility if you have too many waivers. But if I could go through each waiver, I think, uh, the case can be made pretty clearly that this is appropriate. Uh, if we could get the technician to either go to the graphic I've displayed or go back to the thing called special map in your system, uh, it's a little easier to explain where we're coming from. And is that likely to happen or should I keep talking?
I keep going.
Ah, there we go. Thank you. Uh, first of all, with regard to the zero separation to a residence, the situation here is substantially identical to what you had on item 60. As you can see, the site of our business is immediately on the corner of Lake Mead and Tinaya, part of a huge center with, by the way, huge buildings, multi-story buildings all around us. And although it's written up to be zero to residences, in point of fact, we're nowhere near any residences and you would be hard pressed to even see a residence from, uh, our property. The reason for the zero is that we're part of this overall complex, uh, and we are, the property line of this overall complex with all these enormous buildings and large fields of parking, which have nothing to do with us, are at zero from the residences. So we think that is a full explanation of why we are at zero from a residence. The answer is, we're not, but the, the huge development we're on happens to have a portion that is. Uh, secondarily, with regard to the separation from specified financial institution, which is off to the left or west here, the same thing occurs, uh, which is to say, we're within the radius of the property line of the other business, but if we were measured from the separation from the business, we would meet the code. Now, we're not claiming that staff didn't do it right. We understand the code is the code and that's how you measure things, but as a practical matter, that's why you have waiver provisions as well, to deal with special circumstances where the, the facts don't exactly fit what you contemplated when you enacted a law to create the separation requirement. Thirdly, with regard to the extended hours of operation, quite candidly, uh, they could limit the auto title loan activity, uh, in accordance with the code. But the facility itself is open 24 hours now and it's not clear to us what would be gained by refusing to help people who come in to do an auto title loan during the hours the store is open, that an auto title loan is nominally not open. Uh, it seems to us reasonable, and I might add, when we filed our application, the staff member who was being very helpful said, well, if the store's open 24 hours, you might as well apply for the waiver to do the auto title loan while the hours of the store is open. And that's how we got here. But if that were somehow material, uh, or if we had neighbors who were objecting to auto title outside normal hours, um, we could be talked into eliminating... title outside normal hours, we could be talked into eliminating the auto title to the hours that the code calls for. So those are our three waivers. It's a very intense commercial area. Frankly, if there's any place where this use is particularly appropriate, it's this site, surrounded by huge commercial buildings on a huge intersection with no residences within sight. We think we've fulfilled the intent of the code, perhaps not the letter of the code.
This was advertised public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
Yeah, I'm really glad I went out there today and met with you, Mr. Borghell, because just to read it is not what, what you see. The place is open 24 hours a day already. It's in a shopping center. There, you walk in, you feel like you're in a bank. I didn't even see a house from any angle that I was at, so I'm in full agreement to propose that this be a yes vote, you know, simply because...
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. It's a motion for a yes.
There's a motion for approval subject to all staff's conditions.
SDR 39394, thanks.
Any other questions? Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that is, that goes on to City Council on November 17th.
Okay, I appreciate that, but just for the record, I think Commissioner Quinn read the wrong number. And so let's make sure we were approving...
SUP 39367.
Yeah. Unless I misheard, I did want to make sure we approved the right item.
I'm asking, but it's SUP 39367.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure that someone didn't claim later we never got approved. Thank you.
Now we go to item 62, SDR 39394, applicant owner 521 South Third LLC, for a proposed 8,303-square-foot office building with two parking spaces at 521 South Third Street.
Mr. Chairman, this proposal for an office building within the office core of the downtown Centennial Plan will retain much of the architectural character approved through previous site development plan reviews for this site. However, the addition of a second floor will result in a 68% increase in floor area, while providing only one standard parking space and one handicap van accessible parking space. Although the parking standards of 1904 are not automatically applied in the downtown Centennial Plan area, the proposed development would nor, would normally require a minimum of 28 parking spaces, two of which would be required to be handicap accessible. Based on these figures, the proposed site is severely limited in the number of parking spaces available for both employees and visitors, and will place the burden of parking on the surrounding area. In addition, no elevator is proposed for accessible access to the second level. Due to insufficient on-site parking and an internal circulation scheme that does not fully cater to those with physical disabilities, staff recommends denial of this request. If denied, the previously approved site development plan reviews, SDR 23906 and 34450, will apply to this subject property. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for the items since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sheldon Colan, 9017 South Pecos, Henderson, Nevada, here for the applicant. This was before you previously and denied at that time, and since then, the client has increased the square footage and reduced one hand, one spot. So I'm not sure what I could do to persuade you to approve it this time, since the conditions are even worse from what you saw previously. It was approved by the City Council last time we went around.
It was?
Yes, it was.
You're not putting an elevator in here, right?
No, the, the use on the second floor for this client really is more of an ancillary space, same use, no elevator required.
The floor plan shows offices everywhere, so I, I can understand existing buildings not meeting that burden, because sometimes retrofitting some of these buildings doesn't make sense, but I can't support a, a new structure where we're knowingly doing away with unreasonable consequences that need to be in a building. But let's see what the, this was advertised public hearing. If anybody else wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Park Barlow, 240 North 18th Street, I just have a question. One time, the city was going to build a parking structure in this vicinity somewhere, I think it was in back of the Moore and John Moran Office Building. Is that still talked about?
No.
It's not?
No.
Then, you know, I don't think this should be allowed.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, closed public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of quick questions.
Commissioner Adams.
Just, thank you. I'm showing the empty lot, but I'm not showing anything with regard to elevations or renderings or anything of that nature. Are they in here, or did you?
They should have been included with what we presented to staff. It was required.
Because I, I don't have a visual idea of what you're anticipating to build. I've got some plans, but I have no clue what you intend for this to look like. But I would agree with Chairman Truesdale. An existing old building, I think there's a lot of room for discretion, and you want to do everything you can to work with an applicant to ensure that they're able to continue or operate or retrofit a business or whatever, but coming up from scratch and not complying with much of anything is a real challenge for me. But I appreciate your candor. You're saying it's worse than the last time around, and you guys denied it then, so I don't know how I...
I could lie about it if you wanted to.
No, I appreciate it.
I mean, unless, unless the owner of the building is handicapped, which may be, may or may not be the case, where's the owner going to be? Where's, where's he?
There's offices completely on the first floor that is handicap accessible.
No, but what I'm saying is, where's he going to park? You only show two parking spaces, and those are handicapped, which if those are, if those handicapped spaces are parked...
There's only one handicap spot. What they were saying is, is if it was a normal building in a location other than this, it would require two handicap spots and many more parking spots. On this building, only, actually, there's no parking required on this building because of where it's located.
Okay. The pleasure of the Commissioner.
I, I guess my, my, again, my thought is, we have some great opportunities here, and I don't know whether the, you know, they're just taking another shot at this, or...
They just wanted to add more square footage on the second floor. That's why we're here, staff.
If I may, Mr.?
Planning caught it, and they asked us to come back to you.
Commissioner, uh...
Just real quick, I work downtown, obviously, as a lawyer going to the courthouse, and I know a lot of the law offices around there, and you're proposing an 8,000-square-foot building with two parking spots. And here's what's happening downtown with a lot of the offices. A lot of folks have their parking lots down there, and people are coming down to the courthouse, and they're parking in other people's parking lots, or they're going to the other offices down there, and you, you own an office down there, and all of a sudden, you have 20 spaces in it, and all you have is your staff and a couple of clients coming in, but your parking lot's always full. And so this really isn't a good idea to come in with a brand-new building and only have two parking spots for it, and I just can't support this one.
Commissioner Trues?
Well, unless we have evidence that these are going to be really nice, two really nice 4,000-square-foot offices, I would, and I don't believe that you're presenting that to us.
No, you guys do have a floor plan.
There's big offices, only two of them, they're big. He's, you know, he's going to be one of the officers, 4,000. So other than evidence that it's just going to be two offices, I would have to make a motion in regards to item number 62, site development review 39, 394, to support staff's recommendation for denial.
Here's a motion for denial. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. That is final action in the absence of an appeal. Just a word of caution, if you seem awful sure about your, about where this is going, I think I would have made a better argument, otherwise you make yourself look very bad as it just goes to the council. Item 65 right now, DIR 39292, Director's Business, Public Hearing, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, Presentation of the Proposed Unified Development Code, UDC, Chapters, Related to Residential Districts, Purpose and Development, Design Standards, and Special Areas and Overlay Districts, Purpose and Development, and Design Standards, and Applications and Procedures. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. If you recall, last month, we went over four different sections, the first four sections of the code that we submitted as part of, of submitting them to you, three meetings in a row, and we went over 19.00 general provisions, 19.12 permitted uses, 19.14 nonconforming uses and structures, and 19.18 definitions and measures. Tonight's meeting, we will go over 19.06 residential districts, 19.10 special area and overlay districts, and 19.16 applications and procedures. As a result of a couple of questions that we received last month, I just want to make sure that we know what is not changing in this revised document. We're not changing the zoning district standards, we're not changing parking requirements, we're not changing sign standards, permitted uses, and applications and procedures. In 19.06, the residential districts, we have streamlined the number of residential districts by merging several districts and addressing standards within those new combined districts. We have standardizing and landscaping related to residential development, we moved them to each chapter. We added a single-family attached R-TH district as another option for the development community. And before I move forward on to the next chapter, are there any questions about 19.06? Okay. 19.10, the special area and overlay districts, we added maps to connect the text of these districts with where the text is applicable. In the CV Civic District, we have used a, we have a greater use of graphics, figures, and tables to illustrate the standards, and the use information for Civic was moved to the permitted use chapter as part of streamlining that chapter as well. Any questions about 19.10? Okay. 19.16, applications and procedures, as part of the merging of titles 18 and 19, the applications and refined, we, sorry, we merged title 18 and 19 applications and refined various common application elements. We added sections for actions that were not previously addressed, and we added flow charts for each application type, again, to make it much easier for users to understand the development process. Any questions about that chapter? Okay, so the, the timeline, we had a neighborhood meeting on October 19th at the Mirabelli Community Center. We're having another neighborhood meeting on October 26th at Durango Hills Community Center, 6 o'clock, and our third neighborhood meeting on November 9th at East Las Vegas Senior Center, again, at 6 o'clock, and the, the final sections, 19.02, 04, and 08, will be heard by the Planning Commission on November 18th. This will also be the public hearing for the Planning Commission to adopt the, the entire code.
Are there any questions or comments or additional information that any of the Commissioners would like from staff with regards to these?
Chairman Truesdale, do these include the recommendations we talked about at the joint planning workshop?
Which specifically? Because these...
I don't know specifically. I know that, that the gentleman from IT was saying they were going to incorporate some things in the tables and all of this stuff. Is that...
That, those functions will be throughout the entire document. As an example, I'll go back to this, they're on every single page, but the online functions will be included as, so when you look at it online, you can, you can click on various icons and that we were discussing, it will either take you directly to the print function or the definition section or help section, and then with the use table, there will be page numbers that you can click on that will take you directly to the information that you need for that use.
Will there be a beta version of this online before we...
I believe so, yes. We will have to test it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know this is advisory, but this was advertised public hearing. Does anybody have any comments?
I've got a question. On the residentially attached houses, there's a code of R-TH. What does that stand for?
Townhouse.
Townhouse, sorry.
You guys should have waited for the next one. We, we, we attended the Mirabelli meeting, and, and we were very pleased with, with the ease of being able to find things in that, and of course, we haven't actually used it for, for a function, but, but for a specific purpose, but for the, for the purpose of looking it over and seeing that and, and seeing a little color here and there, it was very, it was, it was, it was very, a very pleasant experience, and it sounds like we're just really getting it all together. I mean, you all are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments, seeing no one, closed public hearing? Now, how many people attended the Mirabelli meeting?
I believe there were two.
Okay, well, but we're, we're still reaching out to all the stakeholders on each...
Yes, we have another meeting scheduled next month, and, and possibly at least one minimum.
Okay. Well, I, I hope everybody, you know, all the industry stakeholders make it a point to come to these meetings, anybody having questions, the consultants, all of the people that are involved in the development process, need to speak up as we go through this, because it's a, it's a great change to make things much easier and to continue the responsiveness of, of city staff to, to making development in the City of Las Vegas, a, the positive experience we all know is and can be. Thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
Now we go to item 64, TXT 39658, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, Discussion of Possible Action to Amend 19.04.010 Table 2, Sexually Oriented Businesses, Conditional Use Regulation 4, to Allow An Existing Nude Show or Sexual Encounter Center To Be Increased, Enlarged, Extended, Or Altered Within The Confinings Of An Existing Legal Lot On Which It Is Located Within The Downtown Centennial Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the first thing I'm going to do is to make a correction to the header. While the term sexual encounter center does exist in the city's zoning ordinance, that is not part of what we're talking about today. That was an error that appeared in the header, and that is not part of our discussion at this time. The term, the terms used in code, and I'm going to refer to two different codes, one is the zoning code, and Title 19, and then one is Title 6, which is the licensing. The terms used that will, that are part of this text amendment are sexually oriented businesses, the one that you're mostly familiar with, and within that, in our code, it says sexually oriented businesses include the following, and there's a whole list, and number nine is nude show, which has to do with entertainment, with display of anatomical areas. So that is, in our business license sections, there are two different types of establishments, erotic dance establishments or topless clubs with liquor. So those are the two types of business license uses that we're referring to within the one zoning designation. So that's what we're talking about. Then, in the code, again, what is part of this text amendment for consideration this evening, there is language, again, in Title 19, under sexually oriented businesses, conditional use regulations, number four, that says that any business existing as of 1992 that is made nonconforming by the provisions of an ordinance, which are our uses within this category, that no such business may be increased, enlarged, extended, or altered, except to change it into a conforming use. except to change it into a conforming use. And so that is the existing code conditions that we are discussing. We have within, again, the definition or the title that we are discussing today, which is these types of uses within the commercial zoning within the downtown centennial plan area, because the uses, these uses that are located in the manufacturing zones are already allowed to rebuild and enlarge on their existing properties. And many of you that have been on the Planning Commission for a time have seen those site development plans that have come forward for those clubs to enlarge and expand. So within the downtown centennial plan area, in the C2 zoning, we have a number of these uses that are in existing buildings that the structures themselves are becoming quite old and dilapidated, and yet those uses are certainly not anticipated to be going away any time in our lifetimes. So the issue is, before the commission this evening, does the commission wish to make an amendment to the code to allow those existing businesses, ones that are already licensed, that already are in existence, to be able to rebuild, expand, enlarge, increase, enlarge, extend, alter, and/or that includes fully rebuild? In other words, they would be able to raise the existing structure and build a new structure, going through a public hearing process with regard to that site development plan review, as long as that structure is rebuilt or enlarged or expanded upon the existing lot. They would not be able to purchase an additional lot, expand beyond the property boundaries, and all required parking would be required to be on that same lot. So hopefully, I've at least clarified what the proposal is before you this evening, and that is the text amendment on which we request a recommendation from the Planning Commission this evening. If there's any other questions, I'll give it my best shot.
So, Marco, basically, what this means is, to the existing building, you can add on to it, you can make it larger, you can knock it down, you can rebuild it. It doesn't mean expanding the locations of how far they go into the city. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct. No new uses and no expansion of the use off of the existing legal parcel.
Then I will support that.
And just because I have to go home to my wife this evening and also go to church on Sunday, I need, and I will be, ask questions in detail. What we're talking about here is building structures, nothing to do the activities that go on within those structures without regard to what the text description.
These are existing licensed uses, and we are discussing the structure in which they are located.
No expansion of activities, just structure.
Correct.
This was advertised public hearing. We're going to go ahead and open that up and take comments from the public, and then we will address this one.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On the three or four buildings that this pertains to, is this that they won't fix up their buildings without the text amendment, or they can't fix up the buildings without the text amendment? Sounds, because I don't want this blackmail. I don't want to be used as a blackmail.
The language is, and again, quoting directly from the code, "They may not alter, extend, enlarge, or increase those structures." So in essence, they have to keep the existing structure that they have.
Best thing to do is put a coat of paint on it, or blue sign. This allows them to improve the buildings.
Yes, Juanita Clark with Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. We have here an executive summary, which we would just like to clarify, says, "Three Such Uses," and I guess that means businesses, and yet it looks to me as though only two are mentioned, a topless club with liquor, and an erotic dance establishment.
Those are two categories of business licenses.
Okay, those are not the names, the names of them. So then, so then, "Three Such Uses," so the three uses are what then?
There are two uses that have licenses as topless clubs with liquor, and one use that is an erotic dance establishment.
Okay, so that's how we get the three. Okay, and somewhere in, let's see, we've enlarged it and all that sort of thing, in the proposed amendments, we saw something about, it was, it was, it was containers that would hold, we got the magazines or the flyers and this type of thing. Is that?
That has nothing to do with this text amendment.
That has nothing to do with this text.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on these items? We'll close, go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners' comments, Commissioner?
I do have some comments. The amendment addresses, really, three key terms, expansion, enlargement, and alteration. And I think we can say expansion and enlargement are the same thing, and alteration can be another. If I were to group those two, one would be growth, one would be improvement. So I see in the text amendment some language, but on the other hand, I really like the executive summary, because, you know, it tells us that buildings can be improved or rebuilt on the existing parcel, the number of uses would not expand, nor would the location of such uses change or move closer to neighborhoods. Rather, it would allow replacement of dilapidated structures, and since there's virtually no likelihood these uses will be abandoned voluntarily, it would simply allow the buildings to be improved within the city's downtown. In other words, that's about rebuilding, remodeling, or improving a current land use. I see this as an ordinance that was carefully crafted for sexually-oriented businesses, and I'm of the opinion that improvement by itself would be an appropriate land use under our existing code, or with an amendment, I'm sorry. However, it's another thing to allow them to enlarge or expand. So I would rather have the option of recommending this in two separate ways. I can vote on improvement, but I can't support this type of business enlarging or expanding. And so, as it's written, I can't vote for its recommendation.
And let me explain how I understand how this came about, because I think, when we talk about expanding the businesses, or expanding the buildings, if you will, it's limited to their existing parcel as it is today. And in looking at most, all of these uses, they're almost all covering their existing parcels virtually as they speak right now. There might be a little bit of expansion, some minor areas and minor square footage as it relates, but the way this is, the way this is presented in checking out the individual parcels, it allows for very little expansion, if any.
Well, that's exactly, I'm sorry, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's exactly my concern. I'm saying, you know, allow me to make a vote that would say it can improve, it can rebuild, it can raise the current structure and build something nice, but that's what we're all about. But on the other hand, I want to be able to say no to enlarging what they have, even if we think they're about full. So I would like that option under this text amendment.
If I could comment, you know, well, your concern is absolutely legitimate. I think that we've got an existing control point, and that is that the lot, the parcel, can't change. And therefore, our control point really is the number of parking spaces per square foot. And so the square footage is controlled, you can't make it bigger than the parking, number of parking spaces you can have. But I think we've got the control there that addresses your concern.
Because they're not allowed to get a waiver for that.
Yeah.
And likewise, they're also, if they change the building, they have to come back in and submit an SDR, which comes back for the public hearing. But I do understand your concern wholeheartedly. Commissioner Plankton?
No, I think you covered. If there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
No, I'm not ready for a motion yet, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the text amendment, and as I understand it, just to make it simple again, it simply allows old aging buildings who happen to be, in one of the cases, I believe, or two of the cases, topless bars, it allows them to renovate, retrofit. They cannot expand, and Marco, correct me if I misspeak, they can't expand beyond their parcel lines.
That's correct.
So they can't buy an adjoining parcel and then expand the business. But it's confined to the downtown, to the centennial plan, right?
Correct, that's the proposal.
Okay, so it really only, there's only a handful of places that it impacts, it's not citywide, right?
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair.
That's correct.
Many of the other similar uses are located in manufacturing zones where they are allowed to rebuild.
Right, and that's my point. If you, you know, without calling them out by name, some of these new places are fancy, they're big, they have valet parking, they're little, they're little palaces. And that leaves us in the downtown with old aging properties held together with bubble gum. And I'm all for improving them, I'm all for letting them renovate, I think it's the right thing to do, and it just makes perfect common sense. So this will see my support. Thanks.
Commissioner Plankton?
Well, now, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to move on item number 64, TXT 39658, to approve the text amendment.
Okay, there's a motion for approval of the text amendment as presented. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council in recommendation form.
Ordinance form.
An ordinance form. Now we go to item 66, Citizens' Participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come forward to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Good evening.
Yes, I have a question about the last item, which was just okayed.
Name for the record, just so we keep that straight.
Juanita Clark for Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. It was talked about going beyond the lot line, no going beyond the lot line?
Will not be able to.
What about going up? What about another story?
Yes.
Or more?
Yes.
What do you mean, yes?
If they have appropriate parking, and they have all the other items, they could, they could increase the height of the building. But it comes to a public hearing, and it has to, it comes back to this and council for review, and neighbor comments as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Commissioner Quinn, on those items addressing that legal service thing, don't worry about the handicap parking, because US Bank has three handicap parking spaces there that are never used. I've been there in 14 years, and I've seen one space used once, because US Bank is, they want you to do everything by electronics now. I'm the only one that's still, that doesn't have a computer. But I was watching, and you don't have to worry about that. On number 55, I was wondering why in the world we allowed an eight-foot solid front wall on that thing? I was never given an answer on that. But the last thing, and this is something that's really important, because it goes on the 2020 master plan. One of the objectives of the city was to go for owner-occupied housing. The reasons for that were because it reduced, it reduced the crime rate, and there was a lot of other stuff. But we were going to try to go to owner-occupied housing, now the foreclosure crisis things, and now we've got all these houses out there that people have gotten thrown out. We need to keep concentrating on the owner-occupied houses. I was at First Tuesday, Metro's First Tuesday down there, and these foreclosed houses are going to give them a fit. They're in there pulling out wiring, plumbing, and I mean, some way, we've got to get the people back into the houses, and the people that have some equity in the house, they're going to keep the thing fixed up, just like we set forth in the 2020 master plan, and we really need to keep on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, we'll adjourn the meeting.